Recording has started.
Will the organizational meeting of January 2, 2023, for the 2023-2025 council term please come to order? Members, the first order of business is to appoint a temporary clerk of the council. Are there any objections to appointing Moana Luti as interim county clerk and Rochelle Thompson as interim deputy county clerk?
No objections.
We will first take public testimony on Agenda Item E, Resolution 23-1, which is electing the chair of the council. If there are no objections, the time limit for public testimony will be two minutes per item with no additional time to conclude. Council members will be limited to one minute for follow-up clarifying questions per agenda item. Any objections? Right here in nine? Yes, sorry. Chair recognizes Kiani Rollins Fernandez, council member.
Aloha, Chair. Mahalo. Two things. First, are we going to do attendance? And then, second, there is a request from people who came over from Molokai to testify. They came over by boat and will need to go back by boat soon. And under this extenuating circumstances, if there aren't any objections by my colleagues and yourself, if they would be given that opportunity to provide testimony on any of the agenda items so that they can leave.
All right. Anyone else wish to address this? Why don't we see how we get on this first item? The chair take that up and then we can revisit your request, council member. All right. There's a roll call that will be taken as well. So why don't we proceed with the roll call?
Members participating from non-public locations are present with them as part of roll call. Starting with Shane Sinensi. Nohelani Uuhu Hodgens. Tom Cook. Kiani Rollins Fernandez. Gabe Johnson.
Present, aloha.
Tamar Palton. Yuki Leisugi Mura. Tasha Kama. Mr. Mayor, there are eight members present. A quorum is present to conduct the business of the council.
All right. I'll ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. So a couple of housekeeping matters before we proceed with today's agenda. I'd like to request that everyone keep their microphones muted unless they are speaking and to maintain decorum throughout the hearing. Testimony will be taken on each item as they're called. Ms. Clerk, please proceed with the testimony on Agenda Item E, Resolution 23-1, electing the chair of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proceeding with the presentation of testimony on Agenda Item E, Resolution 23-1, entitled in "Elected the Chair of the Council." Members of the public may testify in the council chamber at courtesy testimony sites or remotely through the information listed on the meeting agenda. Individuals in the council chamber may sign up to testify with the staff member located at the desk on the eighth floor lobby. Individuals at courtesy testimony sites may sign up with staff at the site. Individuals participating remotely may sign up in the meeting chat. Individuals connected by phone are currently on mute and should only unmute if they wish to testify. Individuals connected by video conference should keep both their video and microphones off and should turn them on only when it is time to testify. Individuals may also be disconnected from the meeting at any time for breaking decorum. Mr. Mayor, the first person to testify is Kisa Lu, followed by Aram Armstrong.
Thank you.
Hi, aloha. Since I'm first, I do want to yield my time to the Molokai residents who are here because obviously it's going to be hard to get back over there. So if any of you guys want to testify on my time, I would much appreciate that you come up here right now, if any of you want to do it.
Chair.
Yes.
Mahalo, Chair. There are 20 individuals signed up to testify at the moment. There are six individuals from Molokai who would wish to testify on two items. May I please request again that they be given that opportunity to testify so that they can leave by three to get to drive back to Lahaina, to Mala Wharf, to get on a boat and then go back by boat to Molokai across the channel before it gets dark.
Okay.
No objections.
I guess I needed to know the rest of that request, which you didn't make clear earlier. So I didn't realize there was a time limit of one hour to get their testimony in. So why don't we take those six individuals? So I guess at this point, we're suspending the item that they're testifying on or giving testimony on. Thank you. You still have your time. You're not yielding your time, by the way. Yeah. Because if we're going to go in this order, you'll have to introduce yourself and the item number that you're presenting testimony on.
Aloha, mai kako. My name is Lehi Bahi Bariti. I live on the island of Molokai. And I know one is the Resil 231. I'm not sure on the chair budget number, but however, I am in support of Kiani to uphold her position as budget chair and I am also in support of the county council voting for their ninth chairman member. Mahalo nui.
Thank you so much. Any, I'm sorry, were there any questions for this testifier? All right, whoever would like to go next?
Aloha, mai kako. My name is Motayo Cibain. I just wanted to say congratulations to you guys. I am here in support of Kiani Rollins to continue her position as budget chair. And I am also in support of the county council voting for our ninth chairman. Mahalo nui.
Mahalo. Thank you so much. Oh, sorry. Were there any questions for this testifier? This is my first day on the job, you guys. I won't get this. I won't get this part. Go ahead, sir.
Aloha, my name is Lilen Karpuz. I am also from Molokai. And today I am in support of Kiani remaining the head of the Budget Committee and also in support of finding a ninth chairman as well. Mahalo and I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you so much. Any questions for this testifier? Seeing none. Thank you.
Aloha, ladies and gentlemen, council members. Congratulations. My name is Kahikiili Pakala. I am from Molokai. I am here today to testify on Item 23-1. I would like to recommend that Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez remain as the budget chair just due to the fact that I think she's the only one that can understand not only what's happening on here in Maui, but what's happening on Molokai. And that's my biggest reason why I'm supporting her. So mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Any questions for the testifier? Thank you very much.
Aloha, mai kako. My name is Josiah Collel Cheng, born and raised on Molokai as well. Congrats, council members. Mahalo for the opportunity. But I also just wanted to briefly submit testimony in support of Kiani being allowed to retain her seat. Molokai, a lot of people know, is part of Maui County, but we as a community have been faced with a diverse set of challenges and issues that are kind of a microcosm in a sense. A lot of issues that probably faced other communities throughout the state a long time ago that we are encountering now and trying to navigate the future. And it's scary at times when it comes to development, loss of culture, connection to place, varieties of things. And we just feel that having a community member from within the community who is privy to our lifestyle, the things that we enjoy, the things that we as a community and a people hope to see and to be able to preserve for the future. Our best hopes lie in individuals like Kiani, who are truly, truly rooted in their communities. And we just kaku o her. And all like-minded individuals, mahalo to you all for your time and the efforts that you're all investing into benefiting all of our communities as a whole. That's just my manao. Mahalo nui.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this witness? Testifier? All right, seeing none.
Aloha, Mayor.
Aloha, Mr. Ridi.
Very interesting seeing you up there.
You gotta take a look at it from this side.
And congratulations, council members. The first thing I want to do is, besides saying congratulations, is to encourage you to show some leadership. We really need leadership in Maui right now and we don't have a chair and a council. So I'm really hoping that today you guys can give us a council chair so we can move forward and not wait for some judge someplace to lead Maui County. So we're relying on you and you can do it today if you want to do it today. And we're encouraging you to do it today. Find us, I don't think, it's confusing to see the mayor up there, to tell you the truth.
I agree with this testimony.
So show us some leadership and let's have a council chair person today. The second thing I wanted to do is let you know about the island of Molokai. We've been playing defense for approximately 40 years now because we have a foreign landowner that owns one-third of our island and they wanted to go one way and the island wanted to go to another way. So we've come to a point now where we're ready to go in a direction that we all agree on, on Molokai. And we're ready to do that. And we were waiting for Kiani to finish her law degree and to come into the county council so she can provide us some leadership. And hoping one day she's going to be the mayor of Molokai, not Maui County, but Molokai. So she showed us a lot of leadership in doing the committee that is really hard to do, which is the Budget Committee. And normally there's a lot of battles that goes on behind the doors and all kinds of stuff. And he went, she did an excellent job. There was no real big blowups or anything like that. So we're here to, on Molokai, to encourage that she continue her lessons learned so she can take Molokai into the direction that we want to go, which is being our own county one day. So I'm here to really push the issue of having her continue as the budget chair and we hope all of you will support that. Mahalo nui.
Mahalo. Any questions for Mr. Ridi? Thank you, sir. Anyone else needing to catch a return to Molokai? All right. Then clerk will continue with the order.
Selu, followed by Aram Armstrong.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Kisa Lu and I am here to testify on 23-1. I'm here on my own behalf, on my own time. I'm trying to figure out how to say things nicely. Sometimes I'm really bad at that and I get in trouble for that sometimes. One of the things that I am noticing as I'm looking out is that I see a lot of colonized individuals who have the opportunity to take power and do some things that I don't think are okay. I say this because I am concerned for our future. That's the reality. I'm actually concerned for our future. I am not sure if some of the people understand that the work that they're doing right now may not affect us the next 10 to 20 years, but maybe a little bit later. We're children, right? I'm not sure if people understand the urgency that exists right now. And part of the reason is because maybe they didn't grow up the way that we did, where there is such thing as student debt, where there is such thing as housing prices out of our reach, where there is such thing as the end of social security. It ends in 2037. I will be 51 and I am a geriatric millennial. So there's not a lot for us, so the urgency is real for us. I don't think you understand what that really means. When it comes to the council chair, I want to see somebody who can understand that a little bit more deeply. I want to see somebody who is up here because they really do care about the future and not what they were told as children, we're going to be the future and then just did that, but actually looked and paid attention. I know naturally the succession for the chair would be the vice chair, which I believe is Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez. But, thank you. But I think maybe the residents from Molokai are right that she should continue in the budget seat as chair. She's done a phenomenal job there. And who I might recommend instead is Tamar Palton. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Any questions for this testifier? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Aram Armstrong will be followed by Sam Small.
Aloha, aloha mai kako. My name is Aram Armstrong. I'm a resident of Haiku. Congratulations on everyone being in the seat. It's the hot seat. I firmly believe that comfortable people don't solve real problems and so I hope there is a sense of real pressure in the room because we have real problems to solve. So I'm going to read from my phone just so I hit the main points. I'm presenting testimony on Resolution 23-1 and 23-4 mainly. So apologies if it sounds semi-robotic as I read from my phone. Real change is structural change. This means that whomever sits in the chair fundamentally matters, which is why I am here. I heard a rumor and it was just a rumor about the potential structure of the council, but it was enough and important enough to be a red flag to be like, we should show up. And so we are here today. I was in the race and I met a lot of you and I really appreciate, I had a good time like getting to know I at the West Maui Taxpayers Association. And I believe that we are all part of the system called Maui Nui United. I was lucky enough to receive 1,800 votes in the primary and I wanted to just share and put on the record that I will be dedicating 180 hours of service to you, council, as a visual facilitator and design thinker and whatever else you want. If you want me to go do some farming, I can do that too. Yeah. So I am here to lo me the system and I've, you know, coolie the system has been a big meme, but if you coolie the system, the system might coolie you. And so I'm here to just massage the system and see if we can improve the way things are running. And one thing I would love to see more is the back and forth between the council and our testifiers. And so I did a little thing with ChatGPT, which is this AI program that'll write essays for you. I asked it, what would be good principles for figuring out who's on the council member and what chair? And if you'd like to know more, I can share that with you. Cliffhanger. You don't, I'll just email it to you.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies. The next testifier on 23-1 would be Lucien Dine, followed by Pamela Tumpap.
Are there any questions for Mr. Armstrong?
It is called, yeah, "Defining Principles for Committee Chairs" by ChatGPT. I can just email it to you if you'd like to know. All right. There's also questions that are follow-on questions besides the principles, so.
Mahalo. So let me, I guess what clerk is saying is unless you're from Molokai and you're on a time crunch, we're going back to the testifiers on 23-1. Okay, 23-1.
Aloha, kako. Congratulations. That was a beautiful ceremony. Always love it when Kathy has a hand in things. She makes everything fun. I'm here to testify, Lucien Dine, from Hoel. Just testifying on my own behalf on Resolution 23-1, electing the chair of the council. And of course, the council needs to have a chair. We do have some interim things that need to be decided by the courts. But I agree with Mr. Ridi that it would be good to appoint an interim person today, however we can get moving. And I think we have a number of people on this council who've shown leadership ability and experience that could serve that role. Certainly, it would be precedent to have the vice chair of the council step up to chair. Whether that would make sense in an interim or not, I would leave to your wisdom. But really urge you to take an effective action today because the people are really expecting this mayor and this council to, you know, get to work. And there's lots to do, as we saw with last year. So you've all done a great job, those of you who were here last year and those of you who are joining the council new, worked very hard during the campaign. So we know you can work. So let's get to it. Mahalo.
Any questions for Ms. Dine?
And Mayor Bisson, I assume that on the other items that we just come back when they're called, yes?
Correct.
Thank you.
No questions. I'm sorry. Who's the next testifier?
The next testifier is Pamela Tumpap, to be followed by Juniana Koah.
Is Pamela Tumpap present?
I am, thank you. Aloha, Mayor Bisson and council members. First, congratulations to all and a very happy new year. This is clearly an unprecedented start to the council term to only have eight members on the council currently when you need to conduct Maui County's business starting today. And we realize this is a challenge and we know that you folks have been talking about and working on it. We really want to encourage you and the newly, the returning members and the newly elected members of the Maui County Council to work together, be the states' persons you were elected to be and to come up with a workable solution today. For us, we feel the best option is to appoint an interim chair until the Hawaii Supreme Court makes a decision on the election for the Waileku seat or until March 17, 2023, whichever comes first. The reason we're suggesting March 17, 2023, is so the council can start the budget process without interruption. This is critically important time. And if for some reason the Hawaii Supreme Court fails to resolve the Waileku seat issue by March 17, then the council could, as we understand it, by resolution, extend the date of the interim chair. So this is such a time of uncertainty. We're watching it at the national level. We're recovering from COVID. We have to make big decisions about our economic growth and where we're going and our diversification and sustainability at a county, state, and national level. So we just want to ask that you work together. This is about creating something so that we can move forward today. And we suggest that Resolution 23-1 be changed to read as follows. Be it resolved by the council of the county of Maui that the honorable whoever is selected be and is hereby elected interim chair of the council of the county of Maui for a term commencing on January 2, 2023, 12 o'clock meridian, and terminating on March 17, 2023, 12 o'clock meridian, or when the issue of the Waileku seat election is resolved, whichever comes first. And we will submit this in writing, but we appreciate the opportunity to comment today and I ask that you all find a way to come to a good solution on this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Tumpap. Are there any questions for this testifier? Yes. Member Palton?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Tumpap, for your testimony. I just was wanting to clarify, if the chair can be changed at any time with five votes, do you still need the resolution to be amended to say interim?
Well, we felt that it is important to have an interim chair. Yes, you know, right now, we don't know if it's going to be possible. We've got a new group. We're hearing some things that say that there's division. And so we do want to change the resolution because if we can't come to five votes, then we're at stalemate. And that's a problem. So we need to get on with the business of the county. And so we feel that an interim chair here will help and we are understanding the courts are backlog, but we really need court resolution on this as soon as possible as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your clarification.
Mahalo for the question. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Tumpap? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Tumpap. Next testifier?
The next testifier will be Juniana Koah, followed by Kiamoku Kapu.
What's up, guys? How you guys say? Happy New Year. Happy New Year, bah. Oh, how you, cousin? You look good up there. But yeah, bah, this is screw up. You know what I mean? First day in the job, we already behind the eight ball. Yeah. A council only get two years. Now it is interim, interim or whatever, no more chairman. Us guys, we getting rip off again. Us, the people, we rip off. What kind of action going to happen? Like everybody was saying, bah, we got to get one chairman today. Today. Whoever can be the chairman that's in office right now, make him on chairman. No ripoff people offer it. We tied. Plus, we get one what? Just say we get the kind, the county clerk, oh, how much freaking hundreds of thousands dollars cost us? We getting rip off, the people. Don't mad, bah. Totally piss off. Yeah? This is dumb, bah. Yeah? We, the people of Maui, getting screwed again. Again. Wake up, guys. Yeah? Put one chairman today. You guys can get to work because you guys only get two years and you guys got to go crack, you guys will call it and make stuff happen. We cannot be waiting for somebody else for coming, bam, bye. You know what I mean? Put one in now. And I think Kiani, she the vice, she was the vice chair the last term, make her the chairperson today. Yeah? And I want to talk about every single, every single committee. Because you guys been jam about committees. A housing committee, most important one. All you guys say you got to like support affordable homes. I want to speak for my brother Gabe Johnson. Baga, bosses will call it. We make bills so us, the locals, can take our affordable homes, not the stupid baga from America. I hate America. With a passion. Yeah? And then you know, Gabe Johnson, when bosses will call him in his office, he should be a housing committee chair. I actually talking a little bit. Chairperson should be Kiani Rollins right now. We no wait around for that Alex Lee baga. To like make this guy an appointment and all this guy, oh my God. Put on, put the kind people who like, what? Hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars? By God. We getting rip off, guys. So rip off. No ripoff off with time. Want to get two, two years. Get us the county council now. Shoots.
Thank you, Mr. Nakua. Aloha. Any questions? You sure? Okay, no questions. All right.
The next testifier is Kiamoku Kapu. Mr. Kapu is the last person we have signed up for Resolution 23-1.
Aloha, mai kako. I never know I'll be following this guy. That's a hard act to follow, but I'll try. First of all, I'd like to welcome the newly elected council chair people. Mahalo. Mahalo for taking the opportunity to step up to the plate because we really need it. And I hope that we can come basically together to solve or resolve a lot of issues that we've been facing for a long time. I'm here on behalf of Ahamoku Maui. I'm the CEO. And my kuliana is to, as kind of an outreach to all the 12 moku's throughout Maui. My responsibilities are to whatever correspondence I get from the county as well as the state and in the federal level to try help in that playing field, to try to get that information across when it comes to generational knowledge. And one person that was highly involved in that throughout the past from 2011 is Councilmember Shane Sinensi. So he knows basically what the Ahamoku system is all about as well as Kiani because that gave birth from Molokai in a heau called Paku'i. And the heau, the heau in Paku'i was what brought out this methodology and why it was important to get with the community and how the community can help with a lot of the. important to get with the community and how the community can help with a lot of the trials and tribulation we facing when it comes to land, ocean, resources management, water, all these things. So our kuliana is basically great. Uilani Kapu, my wife, is the representative for the Ahamoku Lahaina District. We have a lot of work that we've done throughout the years, from 2011, 2012, Governor Neil Abercrombie signed into Act 288 of the Ahamoku Advisory Council System, which no longer exists. And the reason why I bring this forward to all of you is because we still are active. Maui, as well as Molokai, truly hundred percent active. As pertaining to the dilemma that you're dealing with right now, pertaining to the Chair, I think Mr. Bisson up there looks like a prime opportunity and example to serve as the Chair until, you know, such a time when this body makes the right determination who would step forward to Chair this House. So mahalo, all of you. And to assure that we have always been here and we will be here always to try to help, assist in any way that you guys need some kind of support. You can find us in ahamoku.org, as well as later on, a more appropriate presentation, I can give you guys a lot of the layout pertaining to what we're all about. So mahalo. Mahalo, no Kako. Aloha.
Are there any questions for Olohe Kapu? No questions? Mahalo. Are there any others who have not signed up yet that wish to testify?
Mr. Mayor, we do have an additional on Resolution 23-1.
Is Kealoa present or on blue jeans?
Aloha, Laimoa, it's your opportunity to testify. Please unmute yourself and you may begin your testimony.
Keaani, see, I knew you would win, Keaani. Hi, everybody, I'm Kealoa Laimoa. And everybody know me, that's why they're all kicking back, because they all know that I'm a very good registered voter. Anyway, I am here to testify to say that Keaani Rollins Fernandez needs to be our Budget Chair. And I am, you can put a little tally mark that she needs to be the Chair. She needs to do her thing because she's very good at it. That's her gift. Anyway, that is my testimony. I really appreciate everybody. And I'm waving at you guys. And Keaani, you look beautiful. I will talk story later. Ahuiho, bye-bye.
I'm sorry, are there any questions for Ms. Laimoa? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, there are no other individual. No other individual has signed up to testify on Resolution 23-1. If anyone would like to testify at this time on that specific resolution, please identify yourself. This is the last call.
Please come to the microphone. Thank you.
Aloha, Kako. J.C. Law from Kulauka. Congratulations to the new Council members. Nice to meet you finally. I'm glad everybody's here instead of being on TV. Going back to the last charter amendment, there was a, with the city county managers and stuff, looks like we, we should have went with the county manager system and let the Mayor on the county Council after all. And speaking of going back, I got a point of order, Mr. Mayor, on the agenda. I was, I've been trying to follow Council meetings and I was kind of like taken aback at this latest circumstances with Alice, Auntie Alice. So point of order, Mr. Mayor, on the item C on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. You being a lawyer and all, maybe you can help us figure out. Speaking of going back, I just wanted to mention Queen Liliana Okalani, and that maybe we should put a Pledge of Allegiance to the Hawaii also in there while we're saying that. I would like to see, I would, I would like to nominate my Council Up Country Councilwoman, Yuki Lake Sugimori for Council Chair.
Are there any questions for the testifier? No questions. Is there anyone else present or on blue jeans that would like to testify on 23-1?
I would like to testify.
Okay. We'll recognize you.
Mr. Mayor, we have Faith Chase, who has signed up to testify on Resolution 23-1. And it looks like Mr. Belinbin may also want to be testifying on the same resolution.
And also Princess Azizi Kayama would like to testify as well.
Okay. Why don't we go in the order that you had, Madam Clerk? What was the name of the first person?
Testifier will be Faith Chase, followed by Mr. Belinbin.
All right.
Aloha. Aloha, Chair Mayor? Mayor, Chair Mayor? Aloha, County Council Members, newly-elected and returning. My name is Faith Chase. I would just like to, I'm sorry I missed the ceremonies, but congratulations to everyone. Interesting circumstances we have arrived at. I guess Maui has never been without those intersections of controversy. I believe in the power of your, I believe in the power and the people, but I believe in the, in the intelligence of this collective group. I've been following all of your work, other than two, two new members, for the last two years. I know that you guys can muscle through this. I definitely would like to see, no offense to my actual district representative, Council Member Shane Sanenzi, but I, I feel like his work, that I believe he's going to continue the work in the committee, I believe that his fellow Council Members know that his position in the Water Committee is, is well-earned and well-deserved and well-placed. So that being so, no offense, but I would, I would not be recommending my actual district Council Member to be Chair, but I definitely would like to see Council Member Rollins Fernandez or Council Member Paulton take an interim, if need be, position as Chair to move the decisions and the lawmaking that we must attention briskly, swiftly here. I, I wish you the best of luck with muscling through that. I do want to share some sentiments with a curious friend that just spoke before me. I look forward to whichever committee holds that governmental transparency ethics position and to create a committee for an intergovernmental, intermediary, intergovernmental committee to work on those conversations that deal with the sovereign, if you will, issues that we have at hand, that we have in front of us plentiful. And just make sure that we are protecting our most vulnerable residents, as I've said over the last two years through the pandemic, in that space. And I think those Council Members that were in office last couple of years know what I'm alluding to, but we need to have that conversation to protect our most vulnerable population of houseless, homeless, those struggling with safe sleeping places and those sleeping in their cars. And this is the way that I believe you can do it. So whichever committee wants to spearhead that, or maybe every committee, an intermediary, intergovernmental committee to deal with not an overthrown country. The Queen yielded her country. And I'm actually really pleased that we have a Royal Order of Kameha Meha Mayor, who is actually familiar probably more than any other mayor that's come before our county, that is Ma'atu, that is comfortable and well-versed in this interesting situation that we're in. Thank you for your time.
Mahalo. Are there any questions for this testifier? Seeing none. Mr. Belinbin, followed by Mr. Azizi.
Hello, am I on?
Yes, you are, sir.
Okay. Congratulations, Mayor Bisson, on your victory. My, is this the only resolution that's being testified on today? I'm sorry, I'm at work. So I wasn't present for the earlier stuff.
It's the only one that we're taking testimony on right now, yes.
Okay. With member, with regards to Council Chair, I really feel that it needs to be filled as soon as possible. We had a pretty rough, pretty had a rough, here on West Maui, we had a rough time dealing with some Council Members on, on some issues like the Great Brown House and other matters with Planning Department and the Public Works. You know, for me, I would really like to see Shane Sanenzi as the Council Chair. I feel like he is the most transparent, transparent and honorable guy to do this job. You know, and I ask the Council and the Mayor, please, please do a good job for the people that you represent. Lot of us people that work and have kids, we don't have time to, time to testify. And if you guys do you guys' job correctly and with honor and respect, we don't have to do this all the time and have to, have to, you know, take time away from our families and our jobs. So thank you for letting me speak. Congratulations to all the new Council Members and aloha, no Kako.
Are there any questions for Mr. Belinbin? Mr. Azizi?
Aloha. Can you hear me?
That's correct. We can.
All right, great. Thank you very much for your time to have me. Congratulations to your position, Agent Mayor Richard Bisson, as well as all you other agents who have worked so hard in getting your position, waving on the side of the road and holding up your signs. Well done to all of you who made it. My name is Alii Ay Moku Moi, also known as Alii Ay Moku Mo'umu Hui, also known in English terms, Princess Azizi Kuulelene Kayama. And I'm present today to just introduce myself, right? Congratulate all of you. And just to let you know that as a noble of the Crown Lands in Makana area, Mo'oloa, Mo'umu Kulu, Ulupalakuwa, Kanayo, Wa'ehu, Wahe'e, as well as Oluwalu and parts of Lahaina Town. My lineage, including actually Mahinahina Au'ua. My royal lines stem from pre-1820 missionary boats landing on April 4th, 1820 in Kohala. And people like the Kameha Meha Alii Men of the New Kingdom Royal Lines know very well where their lines touch the old Kingdom Royals that I represent. That's pre-1893, so the Noble Political Party of 1892 that existed. I am that party today, in 2023. And this is what we call today, a new beginnings, indeed. Faith Chase had definitely said it correctly. Definitely interesting times. And so I think you should take your time with the county Chair position. Do not think you should rush into this position. I think it should be some, a thought that will take not just the Noble Political Party head Royal Councilman like myself, a part of this decision-making with the Agent Lead Mayor title, Bisson, and alongside his other employees that are below him, that works for him, all of you that got appointed. I think he should really take his time. And, and that's all I want to say today because we have a lot of confusion in the land and we have been for a very long time. And we've also had a lot of fake representation. And I have a lot of relatives that I'm related to in the noble parties that have been also used, abused, and what I like to call opieeed on for their glory and their fame and their reputation. And with that being said, I would like your party or your agency of Washington DC, that is an LLC, that is situated as a business within the Kingdom Hawaii soil, that is still under international public law, that kisses domestic law, to recognize the Noble Party of 1892 that is still alive and present and that has been silent and put a veil over, will no longer be veiled. And so we would like you guys to, to understand our position as we understand yours and recognize that we are present now in 2023 alongside you and your party's decisions from here on. Thank you for your time. And I appreciate all of you for your ears and your time. And I hope you have a great party tonight. And we have to decline your invitation, but we would love to be there in spirit. Cheers. I think, I think my, my, my concern is, my main concern is, take your time with your county Chair decision. And I know everybody here wants to rush you to make that decision and everybody wants to be in that Chair so quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Kayama. Thank you. Are there any other testifiers?
Mayor, at this time, there are no other individuals to testify on Resolution 23-1. If there is anyone who would like to testify on this resolution, please identify yourself.
All right, seeing none. Members, are there any objections to closing public testimony, accepting and accepting written testimony for Resolution 23-1?
No objections.
All right, then, Ms. Clerk, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, you have before you Resolution 23-1 entitled, Electing the Chair of the Council.
All right, Members, the floor is open for motions. The presiding, I'm not the Chair. Presiding Officer recognizes Ms. Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move to nominate Member Tasha Kama as Chair. And if I get a second, I'll elaborate.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize who the first second was. Okay? That motion was made by Member Paulton, seconded by Member Rollins Fernandez. We'll open up for discussion. Ms. Paulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. You know, as, as many people said, it's so important for us to nominate a Chair today so that we can hire our staff, that we can.
We can nominate now. I just put, get moving.
Who's responsible for the? Okay, thank you. You may continue.
Thank you. So that we can be ready to respond to any and all situations that can arise before we nominate a Chair. My understanding is that it could take up to 90 days for the appeals process to play out. And we were all elected here to be leaders, not, not for any one issue, but to, to help and lead with you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I, I don't think that we need to amend the resolution to say interim if at any time it's not working out. There would be five votes to change things. But I think Member Kama, as the Council Pro Tem, has shown leadership in public speaking and representing the Council. And, you know, prior to the election, she had a broad base of support from either side of issues. So I think, you know, we, we need to make some compromises. Not everyone's going to get everything that they want. And I, I think this could be a way forward for us. Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
But point of clarification, then, are you moving to amend Resolution 23-1 to put Member Kama's name?
Yes, thank you. Interim Clerk, Rudy.
All right, so the motion is amended and the second is still, still made on the amended motion? All right. Then Ms. Fernandez, you have the next, you have the floor.
Yes, that was the motion that I was seconding. Mahalo, Ms. Rudy. I, I first had a question for you, Chair, as we are operating without Council rules or interim rules? If you were planning to hold us to speaking only twice to a motion?
I don't know your rules. I don't know if that's all you're allowed to do.
Oh, Robert's rules as a backup. Okay. I was just wondering. Okay.
You know, I guess if, well, here's, here's my rule, and this might not be Robert's rules, but if you start to repeat yourself, I'll probably ask you to move on to something else. If you're going to say something- If you're going to say something new, go ahead and feel free to say it. Sometimes things come to you later and not at the time you're speaking, but as long as you're not repeating yourself, I, I'm okay with that.
Sounds like a great rule. I like it. Mahalo. I wanted to echo the sentiments of, um, Member Paulton, uh, in nominating, um, council member Tasha Kama. Uh, and mahalo to all the testifiers, uh, for supporting or asking if I would consider, uh, being council chair, as the former council vice chair. Uh, I understand that it, it makes sense, uh, for the vice chair to move into the position of chair. Um, but, um, at, at this time, I'm, um, not interested, uh, in being the council chair. I, I would really like to, uh, remain on as, uh, budget chair. And so as Member Paulton had, uh, stated, that, uh, council member Kama did receive, um, broad support from all of our community members. And that's, that's who we serve here. Is, is, you know, our residents of Maui County. And it's their interest that we need to, uh, put at the forefront of our decision-making. And the role of a council chair is really administrative. Um, and that's the other reason it would be really tricky for me to be council chair is because there's a lot of ceremonial and in-person events that our council chair would, would have to attend to, uh, to represent us as, as a council. And, uh, that would just be really logistically difficult, uh, with only one airlines and possibly having to come over by vote. And we don't have a ferry anymore. Uh, but, uh, I, I think having, um, a council chair that lives on Maui would, uh, logistically make sense. Uh, and I think, uh, council member Kama has shown herself to be really fair and caring. And, uh, I believe she would be an amazing... I would be supportive of her being our council. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Yes, Member Sugimura.
Thank you. Um, I also would like to, um, strongly support Tasha Kama for council chair. I believe not only what, um, I would like to echo what the other members have said, but knowing her, um, great heart, compassion for all the people of those who have difficult times as well as those who, um, you know, stand and work beside us. Uh, Tasha Kama has been a friend of mine, somebody I can trust, and I think is somebody that people can trust. So I strongly support Tasha Kama to be, um, chair and, uh, will take us forward. And I hope that we resolve this, um, lawsuit that's hanging over all of us that is putting us in this very awkward position because that's when we would have all the people be able to be represented when there's nine of us. But for now, I support Tasha Kama to be the council chair.
Thank you, Members Sugimura. Are there any other, is there any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Uuhajins.
Thank you. I would also like to echo everybody here. I'm so happy she, Auntie Tasha Kama, has so much support and have to learn to call her Councilmember Kama on the blue carpet. But I will, I'll get there. But I'm very much looking forward to her character and her leadership guiding us through this difficult time. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez.
Just really quick, um, if we could have clarification on, uh, whether council member Kama would accept the nomination?
I will hear from, uh, Member Kama at this time. Chair.
Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and thank you, Members, for your votes of confidence and support, trust, and love. Because I do love you all, you know that, even if we disagree on a whole bunch of stuff. But I think we agree more than we disagree. And I'm looking forward to moving into 2023, uh, with love and power so that we can pass this on to our people in our community. So thank you. And yes, Chair, I do accept.
Thank you, Kama, uh, Member Kama. Any other discussion, any further discussion from any other members? All right, seeing none, then, Ms., Madam Clerk, please call a roll call, vote.
Jane Sinancy.
Aye.
Nohelani Uuhajins.
Aye.
Aye.
Me Rollins Fernandez.
Aye.
Gabe Johnson.
Aye.
Mara Paulton.
Aye.
Yukile Sugimura.
Overwhelming aye.
Tasha Kama.
Yes.
Congratulations, Member Kama, on your... I think it's, uh, appropriate to call a recess, but I think under the rules, I'm supposed to have Chair Kama take her position here to call the recess. I just don't know if I want to force her to come walk up these stairs without a recess. What, what, what can we do? Can she make a, call a recess from there? I can call the recess. Okay, everybody agrees with that? All right, then we're, we're in recess. Do you have to follow this thing? All right, five-minute recess. How's that? All right, thank you.
Recording has stopped.
We'll count down for a kaku, five, four, three...
Recording has started.
One. Will the organizational meeting of January 2nd, 2023 please return to order? Members, without objection, I will be taking agenda items K through O out of order, which is the appointment of the legislative branch, staffing, and adjourn the meeting at 4:30 to attend the mayor's inauguration. If we have not completed our agenda by 4:30, we will adjourn and reconvene at a time later on. No objections. Thank you. My intention is to defer the appointment.
I, I, um, I'd, I'd really like to finish the agenda. Um, would it be adjourned or would it be recessed? Cause whether we hear or defer the items, we still need to take testimony, right? Okay.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. So... Yes. Miss Rollins Fernandez?
Yes. Um, since you asked if there were any objections, I also object to that plan, uh, and, uh, support what Member Paulton just said about finishing our, yeah, agenda today. Um, we have a, a gallery full of people who came here to testify and I, I don't think it's fair to them to not, uh, complete the business. Um, I understand going to the mayor's, uh, inauguration ceremony. Um, but I believe in, in 2019, we underwent that, uh, so that we could complete our business because that should be the priority. So if we can get that done before then, uh, then, you know, let's adjourn. But until we complete our business here, I think that is, uh, what we were elected to do. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, uh, Ms. Yukile Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I, I would like to, um, follow your thought on taking care of the agenda items that are, uh, of priority at this time. And then to be able to take the right action so that we could, you know, we could make sure that we take care of the staff and the clerk, uh, OCS staff, the clerk, the director, deputies, I think what you were talking about.
Correct.
Uh, which is, um, I think, uh, important so that we could take care of our structure as the legislative branch to, um, take care of the business of the council. So I support what you're trying to do, Chair. It's your call.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I think if we're, we're, if we work hard, we can get this done today. And if, even if we're running a little bit late, I think it is important to get this done today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cook?
Um, th- this is my first day.
Yes.
And, uh, I'm really pleased how this is going. I'd like us to, I'm supportive of us taking the break and, uh, taking care of business, taking the break and sincerely all working together to complete the balance of it. I would like to go to the mayor's inauguration today. And I'd like us to leave today taking care of some positive business and leaving the doors open for us to work together. So that's, that's my request to the council. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
I'll say something too. I'm in agreement with you in doing the items K through of us to continue our legislative business and hopefully finish the rest when we have our entire council. Thank you.
Thank you. So why don't we continue to see where we go and where we land? All right? Yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez?
Chair, mahalo.
Chair, mahalo, um, for this final comment. I think, um, even if we took up those resos first and we're saying that we're gonna recess and come back and try our best to finish, uh, the remainder of the agenda, those, uh, resolutions don't take effect until we adjourn. So regardless of whether we take up those resolutions before we recess or after we recess, I think, um, it, it won't go into effect until we adjourn. So if we are truly all working together and the intent is to compromise, come together and truly serve, uh, our community as a whole, that, uh, we would take up the items, uh, that we need to and we commit to, uh, completing the agenda today.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you Chair, I, I would echo that sentiment. If, if we're going to skip who is committees, then how are we gonna prepare for our very important committees? We need to hit the ground running. There's crises, there's issues that we need to fact, we need to work on and the longer we delay, the longer our problems aren't being solved. So I think we should really push. We just got out of an election, we have words that are, we have to hold ourselves to. The community is gonna hold ourselves to these words. So let's get the ball rolling and let's do this whole thing today. Mahalo Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yes, Ms. Paulton?
Thank you Chair Kama. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, just as whenever we get our ninth member, we can reorganize the council chair seat, we can also reorganize the committee chairs as well. And I think the importance in not just hiring our staff, hiring our staff is very important as well. But if we, um, have a disaster, if we have loss of life, if we have anything occur, um, after today, we won't be set up in a way to make a budget amendment for the administration. We won't, um, be able to do much. And that was the point of moving forward with just the chair, not just so the mayor can make it to his inauguration. But should anything happen within, I, I've been told it's a 90-day appeal period and for us to hold off for 90 days, um, it, it doesn't seem right for, on behalf of the county of Maui. So, um, I would say just take it up in order and commit to finishing. I'm, I'm supportive if folks would like to go to the inauguration and take a recess and come back and finish our work. But I think, um, anything short of finishing our work is a disservice to the people. And, um, when we get a ninth member, whomever it is, if things aren't the right way they are now, or at the end of today, then we can always revisit as well.
I agree. I don't intend on waiting 90 days. Uh, my intent was just to adjourn for at least a week until, um, some of us would be able to have an opportunity to look at the standing committees and take a look at, um, what they are saying and consider some of the testimonies that have been submitted in writing was regarding some of those committees and chairmanship of those committees. So instead of taking kids' time now on the floor to do that, that we can take it home and think about it and then come back maybe in a new week and talk about how we're going to organize.
I guess I'm just concerned whatever disaster could happen, could happen tomorrow, could happen in the next day. I mean, that's the thing about a disaster, you can't plan ahead for it.
Correct.
And so, you know, if, if in a week we feel differently, then we can make a resolution to change, but
Absolutely.
I think, um, it's in the best interest of the county as a whole to be able to move quickly should anything arise at any time between now and a week. Um, and it can always be changed with a resol as well. So that's just my plea to, to finish the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Ms. Yuki Le Suguimura?
Thank you. Um, if there is an emergency from now to the time that our committees are organized, would I ask Corp Counsel for what they're saying? Because I believe that the, um, the mayor has a right or the budget amendment, should it happen, I hope heaven forbid that doesn't happen, can be taken up by the full council, doesn't have to go, you know, to a particular committee. I don't know if it's, it's Corp Counsel or if, if it's
OCS?
Answer.
Corp Counsel? Ms. Wood?
Sorry, my first day too. I would defer to OCS. OC.
OCS?
OCS.
Okay. David, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, I'm David Rotz. I just want to acknowledge for the record, Office of Council Services staff hasn't been appointed yet for the new term. So Ms. Fujita and I are here to help on an interim basis, I guess, as kind of volunteers for the moment. Um, we can provide answers to factual or logistical questions. We don't have attorneys authorized in the Office of Council Services to provide legal advice at the moment. So Corporation Counsel is your exclusive legal advisor. But, um, with that disclaimer, I'm sorry, I need the question repeated actually, please.
So maybe Corp Counsel can answer it then. I don't mean to impose upon you. It's, it's really about how to handle an emergency if the council doesn't have the committees established, because I don't think that we need to have that for us to take care of an emergency, because I don't want our residents to panic, you know? So I wonder if you could answer that.
Mr. Whitaker?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Suguimura. Uh, first, I wanted to introduce myself, Deputy Corporation Counsel Kaila Whitaker. I'm here along with New Corporation Counsel Tori Takeyasu. Um, you have not adopted the rules of the council yet, so we're looking to the charter and under the charter, um, the council can act as a body in a time of emergency without referral to a committee.
For that clarification, because I don't want people in the audience or the people watching on Akaku to think that we would be hampering their safety, um, through our actions today, because I think there's, there's already places in our charter, which is our constitution, on how we can act in terms of emergencies. So I just wanted that clarification. Thank you, it's already in our charter. Handled.
Thank you. Ms. Ronalds Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair.
Yes.
I was hoping that you could elaborate a little more on what you said earlier about thinking through, uh, the committee resol, um, and other resos, um, that we would not take up today, um, to have more time to think through it. Uh, there are, uh, names assigned already to each committee, there's chairs and members. So obviously, there was time that was put into it. Um, so I'm, I'm, what, what were you hoping that a week of thinking would give us?
I was hoping that the week of thinking would help us to rethink of what we thought through earlier. That was what my thoughts.
And that would be done privately instead of in an open meeting?
Well, it has to be done privately or two members, right? Because three of us could not meet and talk about these things, right? But certainly two could, right? And that was what my thoughts were.
I think with a gallery full of people, like, they would appreciate that discussion being had in an open meeting.
I'm sure. Mr. Cook?
Thank you Chair. Um, the mayor's just taking office, we're experiencing a transition in the administration currently. Um, they are having to hire all of the people and whatnot. So I think that this spending a week or two to us working on this, I, I'm pretty, I pray we're not looking at 90 days or a long period of time. Um, I'm supportive of relatively brief time and then addressing the committee structure. I think that actually, kinda, the mayor working simultaneously with it, we're all, we're all on board if there's an emergency, we're all on board to serve the community in any way necessary. So, thank you.
So, why don't we just continue where we started, at least where I started? And let's get our staff online and just continue to see where we land at the end of the day. Okay, and then let's, we've done this before, we've gone for broke and we have ended up, you know, we're solving lots of issues, so let's continue on. Can we do that? Yes, Ms. Ronalds Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. Um, I would still object to that.
Okay.
So
Noted.
I don't know if we would need to have a motion in order to con- conduct ourselves that way.
Okay, so do you, would you like to ask our volunteer staff or would you like to ask our Corp Counsel that question?
Um, we have Corp Counsel and we have interim clerks.
Gustavo?
So, uh, Chair?
Yes.
Um, there's been an objection to your ruling on the order procedure. And so the appropriate thing to do now is take a vote of the body to overrule the chair. And so they, to overrule the chair, you would need five votes, um, to, uh, overrule the decision of the chair. So, um, that's the procedure at this moment, Chair.
Okay, so we need to take a vote. Okay, yes, Mr. Senancy?
Uh, just clar- thank you Chair, just clarification on the motion again?
So there's been an objection to the chair's suggestion to take things out of order and to take the staffing for today.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct, Ms. Ronalds Fernandez?
Um, it, yeah, so it wouldn't be a suggestion, as Mr. Whitaker articulated, it is the decision of the chair.
Yes.
And it would be really unfortunate if, as the first act, as the council chair, we're already taking a vote to overrule and appeal the decision of the chair that I said in my comments would be fair.
Yes, it would be, but it's really up to this body. Ms. Yuki Le Suguimura?
So do we need a motion to support?
Yes, that's what Mr. Whitaker said.
Um, so because the, um, there's been objection to the chair, the motion is a motion to overrule the decision of the chair.
Okay, so that's the motion that's on the floor? An implied motion?
Yes.
Okay. So?
So I need a motion. Mr. Whitaker?
So it's, the objection has already been made and so, um, you can take a vote now and, um, the Madam Clerk can indicate what the vote, um, is, but it should be. Um, the, uh, motion is to overrule the decision of the chair.
So, members, do you understand that? That your vote will be a motion to overrule the chair? And we'll start with, um, Mr. Senancy, go ahead, Ms. Ludi.
Councilmember Shane Senancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nohe Lani Uuhodgens?
Do I vote yes or no to support? I'm, I'm still a little bit confused, so I'm gonna vote to side with the chair.
Okay, that's no.
No.
That's no. Councilmember Tom Cook?
No.
Councilmember Kiani Ronalds Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yuki Le Suguimura?
No.
Chair, the vote is
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, the chair also gets a vote.
Uh, Chair Tasha Kama?
I vote no.
Chair, the, you have four ayes and four noes, the motion bells.
Yes, Ms. Paulton?
Thank you Chair. Um, can I, um, ask that we skip K and M and go to L, N, and O?
That was my intent.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. So, so, did I hear someone? Oh, okay, okay. So Resolution 23-7 is appointing Tracy NT Fujita, the Director of Council Services and setting the salary.
Chair proceeding with testimony on Resolution 23-7 entitled Appointing Tracy NT Fujita, the Director of Council Services and Setting the Salary. The first person signed up to testify on this resolution is Ms. Rochelle Kawasaki, followed by Junya Nakoa.
Aloha Chair and members of the council. My name is Rochelle Kawasaki, I'm a county employee, however, I'm here appearing on my own time and speaking as an individual. If I may have your permission, Chair, I would like to speak on 23-7, the Director of OCS, the Deputy Director 23-9, and the OCS staff 23-14 at the same time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't have to tell you that OCS employees are top-notch, capable and intelligent problem solvers that serve the council and the public with excellence. This comment deserves to be in the public record. Ms. Fujita and Mr. Rotz have led this office well for many years and I have no doubt they will continue to do so. Having had the opportunity to work in OCS for 10 years in the earlier part of my career, I can say with confidence that it's a great place to work and with some incredibly talented people. It's nice to see that many of the people I worked with 15 years ago are still there in the office, which is a testament to a great work environment. Thank you, and I will reserve my comments on the other resolutions for later.
Thank you, Ms. Kawasaki. Members, questions for the testifier?
Thank you.
Dingnan, thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Junya Nakoa.
Mr. Nakoa, are you there?
Mr. Nakoa, it's your opportunity to testify, please unmute at this time. Why don't we? Members of the public signed up to testify on Resolution 23-7. If there's anyone that would like to testify on this matter, please unmute yourself or make yourself known, this is the last call. Chair, I see no further testifiers signed up tonight or anyone unmuting.
Thank you. Members, are there any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony for Resolution 23-7?
No objections.
No objections.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shane Senancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nohe Lani Uuhodgens?
Aye.
Well, you have to do the motion, I think.
The resolution is 23-7, Appointing Tracy NT Fujita, the Director of Council Services and Setting the Salary.
We need a motion? Member Ronalds Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair.
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 23-7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 23-7? First discussed, yes, Member Ronalds Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair, I speak in full and strong support of Ms. Fujita, who has been, uh, the head, uh, the Director of OCS, uh, for the past three and a half-ish years.
Two and a halfish?
Yeah. Exact terms. Um, she has, uh, run OCS so beautifully, um, the morale has been strong and up and she, uh, even last night, I'm sorry to say, I, I bothered her at about 8:45 last night to ask a question and she's always so responsive and so professional. And, um, I think the OCS team thrives under her leadership and it's an honor to, uh, support her to stay on. Mahalo Chair.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Ms. Yuki Le Suguimura?
Thank you. Um, I too support Tracy and David Rotz later. I, I do wanna say that I wanna amend this Resolution 23-7 to delete the future raises that are, are, um, part of the resolution, which states that their salary, which is 156, 982, 982 through June 30th, 2023, and the part I wanna delete is after that, um, where it gives them 5% raises, uh, which is 164, 831 as of June 1, 2023, and 173, 073 as of July 1, 2024, because those dates are in the future. So to be fair, and I think to be objective, that we should talk about today and not talk about things that are gonna happen in the future. Um, OCS does not come under the Salary Commission, which I think this is trying to mirror. Um, it is, it is our, our call as this body. And so therefore, even if I agree with all of you and how wonderful they have been managing this, you know, difficult department, because they have to work with all eight, nine of us, um, which could be challenging sometime and the which could be challenging sometime, and the staff is wonderful, that I think we can approve their salary as of today, for today up to June 30th, 2023, and not put in, so delete after June 30th, 2023, up till 2024 in the resolution. So I wanna amend it to delete that. I need a second.
Is there a second to Ms. Yuki Le Sugimura's motion? Seeing no second, the motion fails. Any other discussion on the motion? To approve the Tracy as our OCS Director, including the salary? Okay, seeing no other discussion, we're gonna call for the vote right now. Clerk, please call for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Shane Senancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nohe Lani Uuhodgens. Councilmember Tom Cook. Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuki Le Sugimura.
No.
And Chair Tasha Kama.
Yes.
Chair, you have seven ayes, one no. The motion passes.
Thank you. Clerk?
Chair, you have before you Resolution... Do you wanna go to 23...
23-9.
23-9, Appointing David M. Rotz Jr. as the Supervising Legislative Attorney in the Office of Council Services and Setting the Salary. I only see one testifier signed up for this, and that is Junya Nakoa.
Mr. Nakoa, are you there? And he's the only one signed up.
He's the only person signed up at this time. It appears that Mr. Lau... Oh, Sam Small, I'm sorry, Sam Small. And it appears that Mr. Lau is also present to testify. So Sam Small, followed by Mr. Lau.
Mr. Sam Small, are you there?
I'm unmuting.
Okay.
Unmuting, unmuting. I think I'm there.
Yes, you are here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for doing what you're doing. It's, as always, it's an honor to be participating in the democratic process. This is actually difficult testimony to give. I would ask that Mr. Rotz's recommendation be deferred. The council needs to take a much closer look at the advice that they've been receiving from Mr. Rotz. You know, I got deeply involved in educating the council into their actual authority to launch an investigation into something like Greg Brown. The council members had no idea that they had the authority to launch this investigation, that counter to testimony given by Tamara Paulton recently does have penalties. There is a penalty for county employees if they do not respond to a subpoena. There are great depths that have not been asserted. And I believe it's David Rotz who has been responsible for not educating the council to these measures. Specifically, you know, there were questions that were submitted by the Napali Bay Community Association that David Rotz withheld from Tamara Paulton and is withheld from Councilmember King as well. Do you really want an attorney at Council Services that is withholding direct information from a committee chair in a substantive investigation that could change the course of that investigation? How is that appropriate? That needs to be looked at. It is, I believe, a violation of the Supreme Court Rules of Professional Conduct. In my own conversations with Mr. Rotz, he completely skipped over the fact that there was a $92,000 bid placed on an investigation by a third party. Absolutely did not mention it. That is completely inappropriate. The community deserves to know these things. The answers to those questions, we had to put a UIPA request in specifically to get the answers to the questions that Mr. Rotz withheld from the committee. You know, it... Even going back to the deferral agreements, all the way back to then, when they were, when the council was advised to close out the deferral agreement program, David Rotz was directly involved in that. And at no point in time did he or Christine Hammond, who was also directly involved in it, at no point in time did Council Services, under their direction,
Two minutes.
suggest to the county council any form of collection on those deferral agreements. They simply called a halt to the program and never, ever established any kinds of means to adjudicate those deferral agreements and collect on potentially hundreds of millions of dollars. And so those are things that I think, you know, paint an ongoing picture of impropriety.
Mr. Small, can you wrap up your testimony, please?
Absolutely. I think you need to defer this, and the council needs to expand an investigation into these actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Dingnan, thank you very much, Mr. Small.
Next testifier is J.C. Lau.
Speaking of Brother Rotz, that's why you gotta come to these meetings. I never knew he was a junior. I'm pretty sure his daddy taught him right. And I believe you can trust his authority, his leadership, and especially his spirituality.
Members, questions for Mr. Lau? Dingnan, thank you very much, Mr. Lau.
Chair, we have Jolene signed up to testify, and followed by Lucy Andone.
Who's the next testifier, Ms. Ludi?
Jolene.
Jolie.
Your time to testify. Let's go to Ms. Lucy Andone.
Mahalo. You know, I've worked with Council Services, both as a staff person here back in the early 2000s and also as a community member for many, many decades, really. And I would say that this, you know, current crop of the last 10 years or so of Council Service has really been exemplary. They do, they answer questions after hours. They follow through on things. And Mr. Rotz's leadership has been part of that. I can't speak to what Mr. Spall is speaking to. It is possible that someone in a busy job overlooks something. I think to accuse them of deliberately suppressing information is, you know, really kind of making a lot of assumptions. And it may be true, but it may not be true. I just know that David Rotz has been there, has done a lot of hard work, has been on call for council members when they need him, has been on call for the public when they need advice on how to navigate things with the Office of Council Services and what procedures need to be followed and so forth. And you wanna keep good people, especially people that, you know, have done the job for a long time and understand how things work. So mahalo for your consideration.
Thank you. Members, go to the testifier. Dingnan, thank you very much, Andone. Clerk?
Thank you. Calling Jolene. Chair, there are no other individuals signed up to testify on this item. If there is anyone present in the chambers or on blue jeans, this is your last call. Please unmute.
Oh, I can't, sorry. Yeah. We get lawyers after lawyers in all kinds of position in this council. We get court counsel. We get the county clerk, he's all lawyers. We get this, what, OCS? Who gonna listen to who? Yeah? I'm confused now, you know what I mean? We gonna listen to court counsel? We gonna listen to county clerk? We gonna listen to OCS? Oh, how much lawyers do you need? And I just hearing this kind, the amount that they're getting paid. And ask the people, we get screwed. You know, we take stupid things to the Supreme Court. And, bruh, ask the people, we testifying. And you guys not listen. You gotta listen to these dumb lawyers. Yeah? And I see you get screwed. I don't even know who listening to who. And you know this David Rat guy? Yeah, I was, you know, you guys all know part of this Greg Brown stupidity. And I was part of this David telling that, yeah, council can go do these investigations. So, you guys not listen to him that time? You know, he told us that you can go do them. Said council get the right to go investigate. There we go, listening to a lawyer. And then nothing happened. Ask the people, get screwed, up the yin yang. How much peoples, you know, they are supposedly smart mothers, lawyers, pointing fingers up, down, left, right, and we all get screwed. So, I don't know, you gotta get it straight, bruh. Because right now, I don't know who the hell listen to. Me as a taxpayer, huh? Who the hell I gonna call? Court counsel? Or county clerk? Or freaking OCS? Who, what? You guys gotta tell us, the people, what's going on here? But we paying so freaking money. So freaking money. For what? Yeah? Tired of this stuff, bruh. You guys, first day on the job, she screaming us over already. Okay, guys, I'll come to talk later on, but I said busy smoke, hey? Yeah, shoot.
Thank you, Mr. Nakoa. Members, questions for the testifier?
I do.
Mr. Nakoa, you have a question for a member Yuki Le Sugimura?
Yo, what's up, Yuki?
Thank you, Junya. So are you supporting David Rotz? Or you give me kind of a lot of general statements, but are you supporting the resolution?
Fuck, I don't know. I just say we get too much damn lawyer. The thing is, maybe, try... Well, I will tell you, I don't support the guy. Because he would point us in the direction as a taxpayer. And the thing not even happen. And so I guess he hopeless. So I don't support the guy.
Thank you. Thank you for answering her question directly. And seeing no other questions, thank you very much, Mr. Nakoa. Clerk?
Chair, there are no other individuals signed up to testify on this item. If anyone wishes to testify on Resolution 23-9, please identify yourself now. This is the last call for testimony on this.
Aloha, I'd like to testify.
Proceed.
Hi, this is Attorney James Forrest. I wanted to testify in support of Mr. Rotz. When I came here three years ago, the council and the Office of Council Services staff was going through a lot of turmoil. Tracy and David have done nothing but, you know, make everybody feel confident and safe here at OCS. And as far as bosses go, he's been one of the best bosses I've ever had. You talk about institutional knowledge. He has it all. Anyone can come to him with a question. He knows all sides of the issues. Anybody to say that Mr. Rotz doesn't deserve to be where he is and possibly deserve a raise included probably hasn't been watching him closely for a while. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Members, any questions for the testifier? Dingnan, thank you very much, Mr. Forrest.
Chair, I believe that's our last testifier. If there is anyone else who would like to testify on this agenda item, please make yourself known.
Hello, this is Dick Mayer. I signed up. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanna, I wanna strong... Excuse me. I wanna strongly endorse David Rotz. For many years, he's been in that office and has served the council extremely well and has been a very good face between the council and the general public. On many occasions, I've sent requests to him for information on bills that passed and what the wording was and things of that sort. And he's always responded quickly, efficiently, and with great, you know, ability to communicate well the answers that I needed to get from the council. And I did not have to bother council members individually on items. So I believe he's served you as council members extremely well. And I strongly endorse your voting for him to put him back into that position to serve the county and to the public. Thank you very much.
Members, any questions for the testifier? Dingnan, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And Happy New Year to all of you.
And to you also, sir. Clerk?
The last testifier that I am aware of. If there's anyone else that would like to testify, please unmute or let us know. Chair, there is no one else left to testify.
Members, are there any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony for Resolution 23-9? No objections. No objections. Thank you. Ms. Clerk, could you please proceed?
Chair, you have before you your Resolution 23-9 entitled Appointing David M. Rotz Jr. as the Deputy Director of Council Services and Setting the Salary.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Was that Member Paulton? Thank you. And the second?
Second.
Member Johnson. Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 23-9. Discussion, Member Paulton?
Thank you, Chair. I speak in strong support of the motion as amended. I have a lot of questions, and I have Mr. Rotz on speed dial. And he unfailingly answers my questions any hour of the day, holidays, everything in between. And I don't think people mention about his amazing multitasking skills. You know, he can have two ears and use them both on different things, and two hands and use them both on different things, and two eyes and use them both on different things. I think we're really getting our money's worth here. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I also want to rise in full support of this motion. I know Mr. Rotz on a professional level. He's been very professional. Even when I come down and I'm putting all this work on his desk, he delivers. You know, we all make mistakes on occasion, once in a while. I was a dishwasher once, and maybe my dish wasn't as clean at one point. It doesn't matter. Sometimes our jobs, we juggle so many plates that something might slip, but that's okay. I believe in his long experience. And sure, maybe some of the testifiers might have a criticism, but who doesn't, right? The last thing I wanna point is, is, you know, Mr. Rotz in his free time, and I'm just gonna say this, I might put him on the spot, but he was a living donor of a liver transplant.
Yes.
My daughter, who walked me down the aisle today, was a transplant patient from a living donor. And that gets me in the feels when you see folks like that. And to have them to be working side by side with me, I stand in strong support. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And yes, Ms. Senancy?
Thank you, Chair, for my opportunity. Again, mahalo for all the testimony, both for and against Mr. Rotz. And I believe some of the testimony against was toward one project that Mr. Rotz had provided some advice for them that they could pursue. And so the outcome wasn't necessarily his fault. You know, it wasn't followed through on other areas. But I speak in strong support of his appointment today. He's, like everybody else, he's been able 24/7. And, you know, definitely appreciate his council chair. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you. I'm in support of this. I also want to, I'm gonna be supportive of the salary aspect also, but I wanna acknowledge Councilmember Sugimura's concern about having like sort of a set trigger for pay raises. I think that this is already the way that it's set, and I accept it. But I expect that we are gonna have... But I expect that we are gonna have some tighter times in the future. And I just want to let people know that I think we need to tighten our belts. Um, so I'm just supportive of this, but I wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Uh, Ms. Suguimura?
Thank you, um, I really support David Rotts. Through my years on the council, and I'm going into my fourth term, he has, um, been there. And like everybody else said, he's really available 24/7. I think sometimes he loves to play tennis and he's taking calls from us. When he was going through his, um, donation, um, and I said, did we contact you when you were in the hospital? And he said, uh, kinda. So he still answers us, you know, when, um, we call, um, him. And I cannot express my appreciation. I will tell you that when you take up this motion, I am gonna make the same amendment to make, to be consistent. Um, I support him, I do not support future pay raises, um, and to be in a resolution unless everybody has the same pay raises in the future and for, um, um, fairness and justification. So, um, Chair Kama, I do support him. Thank you very much, David, he knows how much I do call on him too. And, um, I will make that amendment at the appropriate time, thank you.
Thank you. And yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair, um, I speak in strong support of adopting Resolution 23-9. Uh, for many of the reasons that, uh, were already cited by my colleagues in the council. Um, you know, and Member Johnson spoke highly, uh, using a specific example of the character of, uh, Mr. Rotts. Um, we heard, uh, testimony speaking to his institutional knowledge. And I, I don't think, um, I can describe how valuable, um, he is as a, a walking encyclopedia, uh, having been here for so long and, um, always has answers to the, the toughest questions. And if he doesn't have it at that moment, he will look it up so quickly. And I, I just, I, I feel like sometimes there must be clones, uh, of him in his office, because it's just impossible, the work that he's able to, uh, get done in that amount of time. He not only handles, uh, nine crazy bosses, um, very well. Um, but he also, as, uh, some of the testifiers speak, spoke to, um, handles UIPA requests, um, media requests, um, and oftentimes we, we as council members don't even know that that's some of the work that, uh, he's taking care of. In the last two terms, uh, we have been very active. And, uh, it's, it's just beyond impressive how he's been able to just juggle all of the PAF's, uh, project assignment forms, uh, to make sure that all the requests that are being made by nine council members, um, are assigned and completed, uh, by the deadline. And sometimes the deadlines that we ask for are pretty unrealistic and unreasonable, but he meets them. And again, it's just incredible. Lastly, I wanted to, uh, speak to salaries. Okay, so as the last two terms, um, Budget Chair, for those that weren't on the, uh, council before, uh, we, um, have our OCS attorneys, because they are not civil service and they're, um, appointed, uh, we don't have anything for them to argue, uh, to justify their salaries. And so therefore, uh, we keep them on par with, uh, Corporation Council. Because Corporation Council's attorneys, um, the Director and Deputy Director are set by, uh, the Salary Commission. And so we follow that. And, um, the, um, Legislative Attorneys, uh, below them, uh, we follow, uh, the, um, CB, uh, Collective Bargaining Agreements. Uh, and that way, we have a guide, uh, in determining what is fair and what is, uh, comparable, so that, uh, our residents have quality people doing the work. Because if we are unable to attract people because we pay far too low, then we're gonna have many vacant positions, as we already do in engineering and surveying and other positions, uh, because we just can't compete with the private sector. And so in understanding how if we have someone of this quality doing the work for us, if we get someone that is not as, uh, equipped to do that work, it could take longer and then it could cost us more. And what does that mean to our community to not get things done in a timely manner? Sometimes you, you can't put a price on it. And so I, I think that this, uh, this salary, uh, follows the position and not the person. Um, just as a council member position, just as a mayor position. And sometimes I don't think the community fully understands that. Yeah, it's not like the private sector, it's not based on job performance, it's based on the position. Um, and so that is why it looks that way. And, um, I am supporting, uh, the resolution in its entirety, mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I think, I think if you wanted to do an amendment, I think now would probably be the time.
It's the motion first and then I'll make my amendment.
Okay. I thought, I thought we did the motion, because Ms. Paulton and then Mr. Johnson.
That's right, they did.
So we're in discussion, so now.
So just to be consistent with Tracy's, um, the resolution that we just did, um, I did get concerns from the public, so this is not only coming from, and thanks to my staff for researching this, um, that why would we give future raises? This is not like a collective bargaining agreement or anything like that, but why would we give future raises to staff when they haven't even performed yet? And this is also not tied to the Salary Commission. I do understand what my, uh, fellows, fellow, um, council members have said about value. But for consistency, I want to again say, I want to make an amendment to delete after June 30th, 2023, um, 156,589 as of July 1, 2023, and 164,418 as of July 1, 2024. That's my amendment.
So that is your motion?
Uh, yeah, a motion for amendment.
And we need a second? Mr. Cook seconds, thank you, Mr. Cook. So it's been moved and seconded to amend, um, Resolution 23-9 in terms of setting the salary as Ms. Yuki Le Suguimura has. So I think we'll take the vote on the amendment and then we'll take the vote on the, uh, original motion. So, do we all understand what the amendment is? The amendment is to delete the salary. That's what Ms. Yuki Le wanted the first time around, that failed for lack of a second. She now has a second. So the vote now is on that amendment, we're able to delete those salaries from the, um, resolution. Yes, yes.
Chair, my understanding, what I hear is that there would be a pay raise and a second pay raise, but it wouldn't be a continuation of 5% in continuation.
Right.
Okay, so with that understanding, um, well paid. And we have the opportunity at a future date to review this well in the future, correct?
Usually during budget, we can review, is that correct? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, members, so the vote now is on the amendment to the motion. So are we clear with that, members? Yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair, yes, um, I am clear on what the motion, uh, is, to amend the main motion. And I speak strongly against the motion for all the reasons that I just stated in the, um, during my comments in the motion. And we have a very little time. And I would really hope that we would be efficient with the time that we have. And so, um, if we know we don't have the votes for this, then if we could not waste time, uh, taking up a motion like this, cause we, it, it's gonna fail. Mahalo, Chair.
Well, I think to give opportunity, let's just take the vote. And I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
But in fairness of all. Okay, so, uh, we'll call, uh, Ms. Ludi.
Chair, Councilmember Shane Senancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nohe Lani Uu?
No.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez?
No.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton?
No.
Councilmember Yuki Le Suguimura?
Yes.
Council, our Chair Tasha Kama?
No.
Chair, you have six noes, two ayes, motion fails.
Thank you, Ms. Ludi. And so now, members, we are now going to vote on the main motion. And this is to adopt Resolution 23-9. Are we all clear on that? Okay. Uh, Clerk, we'll call.
You, Chair? Councilmember Shane Senancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nohe Lani Uu Hodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yuki Le Suguimura?
No.
Chair Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Chair, you have seven ayes, one no, uh, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Ludi. Thank you, members. Um, Ms. Clerk? Continuing on with Resolution 23-14.
Thank you. You have Resolution 23-14, Appointing the Staff of the Office of Council Services. Chair proceeding with testimony on Resolution 23-14. Uh, Junior Nakua has signed up for this matter. And I believe at this time, he is the only person signed up on this resolution.
Mr. Nakua?
Mr. Nakua, it's your time to testify, please unmute. Chair, we do have Lucy Andine present, and it appears that she would like to testify on this resolution.
Okay.
Thank you so much, once again, Lucy Andine is a private individual. I testify in strong support of, uh, retaining and adding, uh, these folks. Um, I'm surprised Mr. Forrest's name is not on this list, but, um, uh, there's some other excellent people that are being added and some great people that are being, um, uh, reaffirmed, who have been doing great work. So please keep our good staff at Council Services, the public really depends upon them, mahalo.
Members, do we have questions for Ms. Andine? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Andine.
Chair, there are no other, um, there's no one else to sign up to testify. If there is anyone that would like to testify on this resolution, please make yourself known. Chair, there is no one else here to testify at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Ludi. The members, are there any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony for Resolution 23-14?
No objection.
No objections. Thank you. Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Councilmember Shane Senancy?
Aye.
We need the motion first.
We need a motion.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by, um, Councilmember Senancy and seconded by Councilmember, uh, Uu Hodgens, um, to adopt Resolution 23-14. Discussion, Member Senancy.
Well, for starters, Casey Apo Takayama. Uh, no, uh, we've been able to work with all of these fine people. Uh, each one of them, uh, we've been happy to interview. And also, um, we get to rate their performances, and I, I must say, all of their performances have been stellar. So, um, speaking strong support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Uu Hodgens?
I've only had a brief interaction with every one of them, but they've been so instrumental in our. Been so helpful with Councilmember Cook as well, so thank you so much, and I look forward to continuing.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Yuki Le Suguimura?
Yeah, thank you, um, yeah, I think we all are impressed and grateful to the OCS staff, um, through all the years. Um, I, I, I guess we can actually go down the list and talk about each one of them. But the new ones, Anna Lilis, um, Legislative Analyst, who's rejoining us, I welcome her, I've worked with her. And she's a farmer, she's a hard worker, um, I look forward to continuing that. Ellen McKinley, I did the, uh, interview with her and excellent. She said she always wanted to, she was trying to get into OCS, she's, she's glad that she is. But somebody I'm really impressed with is, is a new member, um, and somebody that's really coming from the outside is Jared, Jared Pasquale, Legislative Analyst from Lahaina. And a lot of energy, has worked in Congress, I think, uh, when I did the interview. But this is, like he said, the dream job, so let's go, man, we're gonna, we're gonna work you hard. Thank you very much, uh, welcome everybody, and I can't thank you all enough, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair, uh, I speak in strong support of adopting Resolution 23-14. Um, I will make this, uh, quick, cause, but there's a lot, you know, there's a lot to say. Um, I just think that we're, uh, so lucky to have, uh, a staff, um, I'll use Member Senancy's word, as stellar, uh, as, as this, to really help us achieve the work, uh, that we're seeking to do on behalf of, uh, the, the county. Um, and I, I guess I should give a particular shout out to, um, my, um, Leslie Milner, uh, my, my Budget Committee staff, Leslie Milner, Casey Apo Takayama, Remi Mitchell, and Yvette Boutilier, there she is, and Jeanne Pokipala. I don't see her on here, anyway. Um, I'm very excited, uh, and our management team, uh, we're so blessed to have them. I, um, thank you all for being willing to, uh, tolerate us, uh, nine crazy council members. Mahalo, mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, we'll call for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Shane Senancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nohe Lani?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yuki Le Suguimura?
Aye.
Chair Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Chair, your vote is unanimous, there are eight ayes, no noes.
Thank you. So members, I'd like to be able to con, continue on with item K and item M. If that's.
Chair.
Yes, yes.
Um, I was wondering if we could go back into the order for now? To G, H, I T. And, um, I don't have any problem with, um, Ms. Ludi or Ms. Thompson, um. But I have been hearing, um, things from my community. And we did post an opening for the position. And so, um, I believe we can keep folks for an interim time. And, um, I think maybe we need a week or so to see if there's other qualified applicants as well, like you were saying earlier. If that's a possibility to put that one off for a week.
K and M, off for a, for a week.
Yeah, we did, we did post, um, to hire folks. And if you'd like to expeditiously get through this, uh, maybe we can see.
Okay, so members, at this time, your chair is gonna call for 10-minute recess till 4:21. Meeting is now in recess. Thank you.
Recording has stopped.
Recording has stopped.
Members, can we take our seats, please? Okay. Okay, as soon as I think Shane's here, okay. Member Sinensi, thank you. Thank you. Same. Okay. Members, please take your seats. Um, I'm ready.
I have a caca on the line, and we're doing our countdown. Five, four, three,
Recording has started.
The organizational meeting of January 2nd, 2023 is now reconvening. Thank you, members, for that, um, recess. So, as I had ruled earlier, we're taking up items K through O and deferring the remaining items to a later meeting. Testifiers, if you are testifying on any other item, we'll take that following items K and M. But I encourage you to hold your testimony until that next meeting. Um, so, Clerk, will you please call up item K and M?
Chair, calling Resolution 23-12, appointing Moana M. Ludi the County Clerk and setting the salary. And calling also Resolution 23-13, appointing Rochelle M. Thompson as Deputy County Clerk and setting the salary. Proceeding with the testimony on Resolutions 23-12 and 23-13. Uh, the first testifier signed up to testify is Kisa Lu, followed by Sam Small.
Uh, aloha, my name is Kisa Lu. Um, and I'm sorry, I forgot I was still on this one. Um, I kind of feel like there's gonna be a lot of people coming up here to talk about this, and I think I'm just gonna let them do that this time and wait for my next testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions for the testifier? As she scurries up there? Thank you.
The next testifier is Sam Small, file, followed by Rochelle Kawasaki.
Think I'm on, let's fix that.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is it possible to speak to 23-5?
No, it's 23-12 and 23-13. And you can, after we're done with these two items.
Right, cause my comments, my comments on 23-5 are kind of a setup and, and, and give context to, uh, the comments that I'd like to give on 23-12.
Okay.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so, you know, uh, uh, again, uh, it's so, it's such an honor to participate in this process with you all. And this is very difficult testimony to give. Like, for instance, you know, I like David Rats, but I don't, you know, think that we've, we've been dealt fairly with in the global sense. And I'd like you folks to understand the concerns. So part of it here, 23-5 are the rules of the council. Um, and, you know, there was talk earlier of divisiveness. And, and even Alice Lee, I'm sorry that she's not here today, because I wanted to address her directly on this. In, in her campaigning, she talked about the divisiveness. And I gotta tell you, from my point of view, it's her direction that is what is so divisive. And this is absolutely exemplified in what I'm calling a power grab to limit public testimony, which I find absolutely abhorrent and unobset- unacceptable. In the new rules that Alice Lee has proposed, she is giving the Chair the exclusive power to fast-track any legislation that the Chair wants, completely bypassing committees' hearings and the public testimony that goes with it. That is one of the darkest and most anti-open government practices possible. It is absolutely the wrong direction. An authoritarian, uh, 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 movement that Maui County is way, way better than. Alice Lee wants to restrict our opportunity to provide public testimony on any council issue that the Chair chooses. I ask you, please reject the overreaching language that Alice Lee has proposed for Rule 10A, new bill resolutions. The bad language is that the council chair may either refer new bills or resolutions, may either refer new bills or resolutions to the standing committee with jurisdiction or post them on a council meeting agenda for referral and other action. That is wrong. That is so bad. The old rules, St- 7G, please use that language. In the case of bills or resolutions having the full force and effect of law, the council shall refer the matter to a standing committee and shall receive the committee's report to, at, to first reading, prior to first reading or adoption, and provided that there's a two-thirds, uh, override that the council is entitled to. Uh, this is, it's absolutely against all democratic principles. And, and I absolutely ask you to reject, uh, uh, th- th- those suggestions. And I'll segue in here now, because uh, testifying on 23-12 and 13, you know, I've got, I've got, uh, 223, uh, signatures here on a petition, um, that here, tutu tutu. Requesting a criminal investigation into Corporation Counsel Moana Ludi. Two hundred and, and like 40 of those signatures came in in the last couple of days since Alice Lee, uh, proposed, uh, Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson to be the County Clerk and Deputy Clerk. Mayor Bisson removed Moana Ludi and Rochelle Thompson from Corporation Counsel, which many, many of us believe is a great step forward to ending decades of institutionalized corruption here in Maui County. Alice's proposed the new rules, this exclusive authority, you know, if, 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 Ms. Ludi, as a litigator, has no position as county clerk. The massive salary boosts over the past county clerks. Ms. Ludi would learn more than the mayor to fill a job that does not require a lawyer. There is no litigation. It's a total waste of her skills. Is it being done, you know, as a payoff to past illegitimate actions or to pave the way for new illegitimate actions? There's a whole big section of this community that believes that that is the case. It is part of the overreach that Alice Lee is attempting, and having Moana Ludi in there as a bulldog litigator is absolutely wrong, 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 for Maui County. Remember, Moana Ludi lied to this council repeatedly about the investigation into bribery accusations within the planning department over Greg Brown's abuse of Napili Hotel. The investigation that she claimed that she did never happened. There's nothing there. It's a total misrepresentation. Ms. Ludi wasted millions of your tax dollars refusing to respect this council's unanimous vote to settle the injection wells. They, it's just the wrong direction for Maui County, and I urge you both, you know, 500-plus signatures, this is the difference between Alice Lee's, you know, pending victory. You know, 500 people, over 500 people have signed this petition, and that petition is entered, I emailed it, and you should be able to see that. We can do better. We must do better, and the community expects you folks to understand the optics and go beyond this overreach to limit the public's participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Members, questions? Yes, Ms. Yukile Sivir.
Section Point of Information for you. So, now all testifiers can testify on anything on the agenda, or are we just sticking to...
We're just sticking to K and M, but he asked for consideration, so I gave him that, and all the time that he was allotted. But it's K and M that we're sticking to.
Still, we're still keeping on the agenda.
But it's segue into that.
As you had requested.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Small.
Thank you.
The next testifier is Rochelle Kawasaki, followed by Brandon Maka Awa Awa.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak again today. Again, my name is Rochelle Kawasaki, I'm a county employee, but I'm here today on my own time, and I'm speaking as an individual. I'm speaking in support of both Moana Ludi and Rochelle Thompson as deputy county clerk, or Rochelle Thompson as, and county clerk, Moana Ludi, and those are Resolutions 23-12 and 23-13. First of all, I commend this council for striving to appoint the most qualified person, Moana Ludi as county clerk. The council should be proud that they're selecting a highly educated, competent, skilled native Hawaiian woman to serve in this very important position. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Ludi as both a coworker and as my boss during two different stints in county offices. I can tell you that both experiences were extremely positive. She's fair, she's intelligent, she's calm, she's compassionate, and she's a person with the utmost integrity. Thank you for taking the bold step towards gender pay equality in this appointment. I know that as council members, you of all people know what it's like to be undercompensated because you basically are paid at a part-time rate for what amounts to more than a full-time job. Kudos to you for selecting the best candidate for this position and for setting the compensation, and I'm not copying Councilmember Candy Rollins for none, I promised I was going to say this before, setting it for the position and not for the person. The rate is commensurate with the responsibilities of this job. Thank you for sending the message that the office that handles one of the most important tasks in our county, elections, is held in the highest regard and would be led by the most qualified candidate. I've seen some comments online attempting to disqualify Ms. Ludi because she's too educated and because she holds a law license. This is simply wrong, in my opinion, and it's insulting to the many county clerks that have held this job previously. It belittles the important contributions county clerks have made to our county, and it belies the complexity of the position. Yes, a law license is not required for this position, but is it detrimental? No, it's beneficial and it should not be used as a weapon against a qualified candidate. Much of the same can be said regarding Resolution 23-13. I speak in support of Rochelle Thompson as deputy county clerk, not because she has the most awesome first name, but because she's the best candidate for this position. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Thompson for the past four years. She's an incredibly smart and accomplished woman, along with being a fantastic human being. Ms. Thompson is a person of great integrity, and she has a heart of gold. She has a breadth of knowledge regarding laws that this county has enacted over the past 12 years that's unsurpassed. She's worked with every department in our county, and she's been advising the county clerk's office for several years now. I'm sure her transition into this new role will be seamless. The county will benefit tremendously by appointing Ms. Thompson as deputy county clerk. I'd like to point out that these two candidates sacrifice a great deal in order to serve the county, particularly over the past several years. They spent countless hours away from their homes and their families throughout COVID with zero additional compensation. They didn't do so for personal gain or recognition, but they did so because there was a need in the Department of the Corporation Council that was unexpected and immediate. They stepped up. They've been bashed and hammered ever since. They took cracks like champs, never once complaining. They accepted public criticism even when it was unfounded and unfair because they accepted it as a part of their jobs. They didn't cry about it, they didn't point fingers or blame, they simply come to work and they do the best job for all of us because they believe in public service. They have defended the county, the mayor, the council, and all of the departments. While the chapter of these two powerful, capable women leading the Department of Corporation has ended, their story is not finished. They have a lot more to offer the county, and I'm sure that you will not regret appointing them as county clerk and deputy county clerk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Small.
The next testifier is Brandon Maka Awa Awa, to be followed by Shay Chan Hodges.
Aloha, my name is Brandon Maka... Aloha, congratulations, Chair Kama. My name is Brandon Maka Awa Awa, and I am president of Napoi Kokua. I am testifying today in opposition to Resolution 23-12, the appointment of Moana Ludi to county clerk. As president of MPK, I've had many opportunities to observe Ms. Ludi's work as Corporation Council since the county council voted to retain special counsel to pursue legal actions against Bank of America for its failed $150 million commitment. On August 24th, 2021, the council unanimously passed Resolution 21-133, noting that no legal claims have been filed on the county's behalf under previous resolution more than a year after its adoption. In response to this lack of action, the council directed Ms. Ludi to work with our attorney, Bruce Jacobs, and to support Napoi Kokua in its efforts to hold Bank of America accountable. Despite numerous requests, Ms. Ludi refused to comply with instructions from her client, the council. She never worked with Bruce Jacobs and did not support our efforts to hold Bank of America accountable. A supermajority of the county council has supported holding Bank of America accountable for nearly three years, yet there has been no traction on the county's case. We have testified before this body many times about the lack of communication from Ms. Ludi and concerns we have despite her desire and her desire to hold Bank of America accountable. But we couldn't wait around for Ms. Ludi to be replaced, so we took actions ourselves and filed our own lawsuit. I testified at May 31st, 2022, Great Committee meeting, that we had just filed our racketeering lawsuit on the 28th anniversary of the Federal Reserve Order for the $150 million commitment. It was at this meeting almost two years after hiring Bronster, Fujikaki, and Robbins as special counsel. Then Marjorie Bronster and Corp. Counsel Moana Ludi told the county council they believed there was no legal case, in spite of Ms. Bronster having been paid nearly $100,000 and Ms. Ludi previously requesting that Ms. Bronster contract be increased. Unfortunately for the public, this contract was discussed behind closed doors within the county council. This past November, I gave an update on the Napoi Kokua racketeering case against Bank of America in testimony before the Great Committee. I also testified about disturbing email communications between Ms. Ludi and Bank of America's attorney, Doug Chin, that we received in response to a records request. I stated that the real barriers we've been facing haven't been Bank of America. It's been politics, it's been lawyers, it's been the influence that Bank of America has here, and it's dangerous. One of the main ways that we've seen Bank of America try and win their case against us has been blocking our attorney, Bruce Jacobs, from representing us and the county. You all saw that back in 2019 when Bank of America's lobbyist, Ivan Louis Kwan, after meeting with Ms. Ludi circulated information at an August 6th, 2019 council hearing to keep him from representing Maui County, and you saw what happened when you hired Marjorie Bronster. Based on these emails between Bank of America's attorney, Doug Chin, and Moana Ludi, she also had had no interest in efforts to block Bruce Jacobs from serving as our lawyer. I urge you to not approve Moana Ludi as county clerk. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Maka Awa Awa. Members, questions for Mr. Maka Awa Awa? Thank you very much.
The next testifier is Shay Chan Hodges, followed by Christina Toshikiyo.
Aloha, my name is Shay Chan Hodges, and I am testifying in opposition to Reso 23-12, the appointment of Moana Ludi to county clerk. At the May 31st, 2022 Great Committee meeting that MPK President Brandon Maka Awa Awa just mentioned, Ms. Ludi told council members, if you're going to be having a discussion as an open session, really what you're doing is providing Bank of America an opportunity to see what it is that the strategy may be here, which could give them a leg up. This statement is interesting given Ms. Ludi's subsequent correspondence with B of A's attorney, Doug Chin, obtained through an Uipa request. Six days after Ms. Ludi's statement to council, Mr. Chin emailed Ms. Ludi at her county address. "Aloha, Moana!" exclamation point. "Please see attached, Doug." The attachment was a denial by Hawaii's District Court of MPK Attorney Bruce Jacobs to be pro hak viche in its case against B of A, which was filed 20 minutes prior to Mr. Chin's email to Ms. Ludi. On August 24th, 2020, Ms. Ludi emailed Mr. Chin. "Hi, Doug, I hope you are well!" exclamation point. "Any new pleadings in this case? I'm curious, based on the order denying pro hak viche. Take care, Moana." Mr. Chin responded an hour later. "Moana, great to hear from you, and I hope you are doing well, too!" exclamation point. "We filed a motion to dismiss based upon lack of standing and untimeliness. I have a courtesy copy, but due to a large attachment, it's 28 MB, so I might break your email if I send it to you. Is it too large? The hearing is October 24th, 2022, before Judge Seabright, Doug." Two hours later, Ms. Ludi responds. "Thanks for info!" exclamation point. "That file may be too large because our email is the size of a pinpoint, literally. I guess I'll wait to see the order. Who is representing the plaintiffs now? Moana." Five minutes later, Mr. Chin states. "Brad Arnsmaier, he worked under Gary Dubin. Take care, Moana!" exclamation point. "You are a hero, and I look forward to reading your memoirs, Doug." In Ms. Ludi's previous position, she was supposed to represent the council's interests, yet Ms. Ludi communicated with opposing council to obtain information about the case brought against Bank of America by the same plaintiffs she refused to work with in opposition to a council resolution. Also, please remember, the $150 million commitment to native Hawaiians was the result of assertions of redlining, specifically discriminating against Hawaiians and Filipinos. You're currently considering approving Moana Ludi for a job that requires the highest professional ethics and to protect the democratic process. This is a right where discrimination has been an issue across the country. I therefore urge you not to approve Moana Ludi as county clerk. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Shay Chan Hodges. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you very much.
The next testifier is Christina Toshikiyo, to be followed by Clara Pana.
Aloha, Chair Kama, and the honorable members of the Maui County Council. My name is Christina Toshikiyo, and I am a deputy in the Department of Corporation Council. However, today I am appearing on my personal time and in my personal capacity. I ask that you accept my testimony in support of the resolutions, appointing Moana Ludi and Rochelle Thompson as the deputy clerk and deputy county clerk, respectively, and setting their salary. For expediency, my testimony will reflect on both Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson as they share similar qualifications and leadership styles. First of all, I will echo my colleague, Rochelle Kawasaki, and everything she said in her public testimony. I believe that they bring to the clerk and deputy clerk positions a wealth of knowledge, legal experience, professionalism, moral integrity, and a deep and proven commitment in serving our community. At a time when we are seeing threats to our elections and our democracy, it is of a huge benefit to our county to appoint qualified and experienced professionals to these vital positions and compensate them accordingly. My opinions are based on working with them closely on a daily basis as they led our department through unprecedented challenges, sorry I'm getting emotional, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I started with the department in April 2020, one month after COVID hit. Previously, for almost 20 years, also under our new Corporation Council, Tori Takayasu, I was a practicing law attorney, family law attorney with nonprofit, state government, and private practice experience. Coming to the county, I faced a very steep learning curve at a time when the county was reacting and pivoting on a daily basis to meet the ever-increasing COVID-19 hurdles. And I can tell you that after almost three years, I love my job. I love my job, it's interesting, I love working with all of you, the people are fantastic and uncommitted. And this love for my job is due mostly to the healthy, supportive, diverse, and respectful environment fostered by Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson. They are experienced attorneys with extensive knowledge and experience in the law and county operations, policies, and procedures. They maintained an open-door policy to provide assistance and support to all of us, encouraged us to discuss and debate legal issues in a safe and respectful environment. They led by example the expectation and requirement to provide sound and legally-supported advice to the county, adhere to our strict rules of professionalism, and maintain the highest degree of ethics. They achieved a delicate balance of awareness of our work assignments without micromanaging because of respect for our work ethics. And when necessary, they stepped in to make the difficult decisions and advise on legal actions needed by any municipal government. Above all, they respected us as professionals and were concerned with our well-being. This work is demanding, it is stressful, often frustrating. The hours are long, the risk of burnout is high. But through words and action, they expressed appreciation for our hard work, celebrated accomplishments and milestones, commiserated on our losses, and most importantly, were always ready to listen, to debrief, to strategize on how to make improvements for the future. They encouraged us regularly to take care of our physical and mental health, care for our loved ones, maintain our hobbies, explore new passions, because we are still people in this community. In closing, I'm not unaware of some of the negative community sentiments, we all hear it, and it's part of the job, like Rochelle said. What I can offer you and hope you will consider is my firsthand insight of the qualifications and professionalism of Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson, which makes them the highest qualified candidates to serve as the clerk and county clerk of this county, deputy county clerk of this county. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Toshikiyo.
The next testifier is Clara Pana, to be followed by Anne Pecathely.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity, and congratulations, all. This is really hard to do sometimes in our Hawaiian community. We are really subject to what some people call colonial battering mentality. I just call it, the hardest people to fight are our own people. Because instead of getting a fair shake, we get worse than that. We get yes-men who break laws, who really do not... We get yes-men who break laws, who really do not protect what needs to be protected and has protection by law. Because they're giving the okay to go ahead with things that destroy cultural places, important places, burials. And I do know about burials. I am not in support of either K or M, Ms. Thompson or Ms. Ludi. I've had the experience of being in a contested case in the planning department for three years on the 21st of this month. An extraordinarily long time. We are just grassroots people. And the worst part is, whenever there was a chance to make this a more fair process, to make the contested case not have to last so long, the county attorney did not help us. They did not help us. Their usual and standard answer was, "We have no opinion." When it came to the point of reopening our case to allow the hotel to put in a kapa'aka'i study, which is where you see if there are any cultural practitioners or practices which will be impacted by a project. They said that Anku'a had done the project kapa'aka'i case. She had done the study, and that they didn't find anything. She didn't interview not one of the practitioners, not any of the people who were impacted. So this is the kind of legal work that has come down. And I want to say that, remember the four ladies who jumped in the hole to stop the bulldozers from going to the burials? On the day before they did that, they spoke to the Lahaina Police, who told them, "You'll be okay, nothing's going to happen." So when they did do this as a civil rights action, the person who is said and reported to have given the order to arrest those ladies was Moana Ludi. If you can't help your own people, if you go against your own people, I don't know how you can be trusted with such an important job. So I just want you to really ask the questions. I want you to ask the questions of Ms. Thompson, because I have heard her testify in public meetings, in her various capacities. And I have not been happy with the way that she has protected our cultural resources. Or I don't think she's ever asked any of us for our opinion of what we thought was happening, even in important cases. You know, I just don't feel that we, as Hawaiian people, will get a fair shake with these two people. And I don't think our county wants to do that. There is a reason why they were dismissed or are no longer in their other capacities for the county. Thank you so much for listening. Mahalo.
Members, any questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Pana.
Thank you very much, Chair.
The next testifier is Anne Pitcaithley, to be followed by Robin Knox. Ms. Pitcaithley, this is your time to testify. You may unmute. Chair, would you let's go to Robin Knox?
Yes. Aloha, County Council members. Congratulations on being elected for your new terms. I'm testifying in... My name's Robin Knox, I'm not a lobbyist. I'm testifying in opposition to 2312. Our democracy is very important and has been under attack in recent years. In particular, the county clerk needs to be really diligent and above reproach to ensure both the integrity of the legislative process and of our elections. With Ms. Ludi, there's been allegations in numerous important cases that she did not serve the interests and instructions of the county council. In my experience, this played out with the Injection Well case, which is an area that I have professional expertise. And I could not understand why the county took the ill-advised and illogical path to go to the Supreme Court at the cost of $4 million. So in addition to concerns about the suitability of Ms. Ludi for the job with regard to people trusting her, it's also the high salary, which has been brought up before in this meeting, that, you know, salaries should be fiscally sound. And she is being proposed for not only much higher than the prior clerk, but higher than her prior salary as corp counsel. So it was also said in the meeting today that there has been a job advertisement, and there might be other potential candidates for this position. So I am asking you not to approve this appointment today and to seek out other qualified candidates to consider before making this decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Members' questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Knox.
The testifier is Sandy Boz, to be followed by Anne Marie Mabbett.
Aloha, Chair, and congratulations, Chair Kama and council members. My name is Sandy Boz. I am a private citizen and testifying in support of County Council Resolutions 2312 and 2313, the appointment of Moana Ludi as our county clerk and Rochelle Thompson as our deputy county clerk. And I wanted to take a little bit of my time to read what the charter... Apologies, this feedback on... Okay. So, thank you. The chart... I believe Anne Pitcaithley's microphone is unmuted. Yeah. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So the powers, duties, and functions of the county clerk says that they be the clerk of the council, which is the function that Ms. Ludi is providing today as a temporary basis. To take charge, safely keep, dispose of all books, papers, and records which may be properly filed in the clerk's office, and to keep separate files of all bills, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and cumulative indices of the same. Have custody of the county seal, conduct all elections held within the county as provided by law, certify ordinances, adopt rules for the classification, storage, and destruction of all records of the county, and perform other such functions as may be described by the council or by law. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about Ms. Ludi's role as our Corporation Counsel. You know, as a former managing director, I can tell you, managing her and her role as managing the Department of the Corporation Counsel is a function that she did very well. Her and Ms. Thompson worked hand-in-hand to manage the staff, which was evidenced by the testimony of some of their former staff members. And I just wanted to say that their duties as Corporation Counsel are not similar to the duties of the county clerk. Their function, their personalities, their knowledge will be heavily utilized in the county clerk's positions, but not in exactly that same role here. You're not depending on them for legal advice. You're not depending on them to defend the county. You're depending on them to fulfill those roles as defined by the county clerk. And I'm confident that Moana and Rochelle can fulfill those roles fully to the best of the capabilities. And I really support their nominations and encourage you to vote to appoint them as the county clerk and deputy county clerk. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Boz. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Boz.
The next testifier is Anne Pitcaithley, to be followed by Anne Marie Mabbett.
Hello?
Yes. Lucy?
Okay, thank you. My name's Anne Pitcaithley. And I was on since 2 o'clock. Congrats and welcome to you all. Anyway, I'm vehemently opposed to the Reso 2312 and 2313. I know that Mayor Bisson replaced Moana Ludi for a reason, and she has a very controversial history of lack of six violations and procedures of the county. And I don't understand, Ms. Thompson and Ludi, that legislation could be taken care of.
You're coming in. I'll... So could you please repeat your testimony? Did we lose her?
Well, and so I just think it's inappropriate. Can you hear me? Okay.
You're coming in.
Yeah.
In and out.
I'm on my phone right now. Think it's really inappropriate, I ask that you do not confirm her.
Okay.
Or Thompson.
I think we got the gist of your testimony. Thank you. Members, any questions for the testifier? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so very much for your testimony.
Chair, the next testifier is Anne Marie Mabbett, to be followed by Tyson Miyake.
Good afternoon, council members. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. First, congratulations on your inauguration today. I am speaking in opposition to Resolutions 2312 and 2313. As I understand it, I have four minutes to speak. I would like to point out that these resolutions include a near 50% increase in salary for both of these positions. That is inappropriate and appears to violate the approved fiscal year 2223 budget. You have an obligation and a duty under the charter to operate under the approved fiscal year budget. These salaries represent almost $100,000 increase, which has not, as far as I know, been approved by an amendment to the budget. Further, I would like to point out that in municipalities that operate under open meeting and open records best practices, clerks function at every single meeting, council and committee. This council operates its committee meetings without a trained clerk. It appears to be doing this, you have been doing this for more than a decade. So effectively, these clerks and deputy clerks are being paid to run two meetings a month. I'm not clear on what they're spending the rest of their time on, especially outside of election years. I would hope that you realize, but I'm not sure you do, how much time is wasted in committee meetings going back and forth on what you're actually doing. Motions get confused. People don't know what they're doing, they ask for repeats. It's not the way this government should be functioning. Clerks should be operating and maintaining every single meeting at both the full council and committee level. And certainly, if these people are getting paid nearly $150,000 a year. The new proposed salary for the county clerk is more than the mayor is making, more than she made as corp counsel, and nearly 50% more than the current clerk was making. This is inappropriate and out of line, and as I mentioned, appears possibly to be violating your charter imposed duty to operate under a fiscal year approved budget, balanced budget. So in the absence of amendment to add nearly $100,000 to the budget, I don't see how these salaries could be approved today. I also find it generally inappropriate that you are entertaining these resolutions, which were introduced by a member who was denied inauguration today due to a pending lawsuit over the election results for her candidate residency area. Further, I thought I was watching this meeting from the beginning, but it appears a motion was made and approved by you at the beginning of the meeting to approve them as interim clerk and deputy county clerk. Those items did not appear on the agenda, and it does not appear that you approved by a 2/3 recorded vote to add those items to the agenda today. That appears to be a violation of Sunshine Law, Section 927D. So please, I urge you to reject these resolutions today and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mabbett. Members' questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you so very much, Ms. Mabbett.
You're welcome. Congratulations, Councilmember Kama, on your chairmanship.
Thank you.
The next testifier is Tyson Miyake, to be followed by Kristy Trenholm.
Happy New Year, Chair Kama, council members. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to testify. My name is Tyson Miyake, and I am testifying on my own citizen. I am testifying in strong support of both 2312 and 2313, Moana Ludi as county clerk and Rochelle Thompson as deputy county clerk. I've had the honor to work with both Moana and Rochelle in the past few years. They work hand-in-hand together, and they both hold the highest degree of ethics. Having both of them in the clerk's office, I know we can be confident that our elections will not be jeopardized. Both are well-qualified for the clerk and deputy clerk positions and will be a great asset to Maui County. And I don't testify much, but I feel strongly to support both Moana and Rochelle in those respective positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you so very much, Mr. Miyake.
Thank you.
The next testifier is Kristy Trenholm, to be followed by Trinette Furtado.
Aloha, Chair and members. My name is Kristy Trenholm, and I am here in my personal capacity on my own time, but I also work as a deputy Corporation Counsel. I am testifying in strong support of Resolutions 2312 and 2313 to appoint Moana Ludi and Rochelle Thompson as county clerk and deputy county clerk. I've worked with Rochelle and Moana for a number of years and have seen firsthand their dedication to public service and the county of Maui. They bring a wealth of skills and experience that are well-suited to the duties and functions of the county clerk, including diligence, attention to detail, and professionalism. Most importantly, I believe their high ethical standards and strong integrity will be assets to the important roles of administering our elections and supporting the county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, question for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you so very much for your testimony.
Thanks.
Chair, the next testifier is Trinette Furtado, to be followed by Stephanie.
Aloha, Mai Kako.
Aloha.
My name is Trinette Furtado. I am a resident of Kula, and I was there earlier. Congratulations to all of you new council and to you, Member Kama, as the chair. I am testifying on 2312, 2313 regarding both of Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson for the office of county clerk and the deputy, and I am not in strong support of that at all. For me, and I've been listening to the other testifiers, you know, when I heard somebody state that she was native Hawaiian, and now for me, that might make a difference if it actually meant anything besides lip service. If you are actively working against your people or you're not working for your people at all, what does that label really say about you? What does that say about you when you use that label? You know, it looks to me, as I have looked at the different people that are coming into office and that are leaving office, it's like revolving door, musical chairs on positions and how they're proposed to be filled. You know, it's really hard to see how this serves all of us in its highest and best light. As Member Palton had suggested earlier, you know, I also suggest that you please wait and consider other possible applicants with less controversy connected to them. There is, you know, a posting out, as she had mentioned, and we don't know. We can get somebody or somebodies that, you know, that could serve us better in those positions. Lastly, as a taxpayer and thus one of your many employers, I am dismayed that there is a rush to get to the mayor's inauguration as opposed to sitting in those seats you ran for to do the work that we voted you in for and we need you to do. It restricts the opportunity of the voting public and community in offering input. This is one of my many concerns as regards one of the proposed new rules of council that limit our, your bosses', participation in a process that is not based on your preference or desire, but rather on the needs and the greater good of our community, that meetings may be concluded by 5:00 p.m., preposterous. As the new chair of a new council, please do not start this year off on the wrong foot, and please make sure that again, and I bring it back to your memory, what includes us and is for us includes us in our voices. Mahalo.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you so very much, Ms. Furtado.
Chair, the next testifier is Stephanie, to be followed by Junya Nakoa.
Aloha, Chair and members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I'm traveling. I submitted written testimony, but I'm at a point where I think I have enough reception. So, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to my oral testimony as well. In the interest of time, I will combine my testimony in support of Resolutions 23-12 and 23-13, respectively, appointing Moana M. Lutie as the county clerk and setting the salary, and appointing Rochelle M. Thompson as the deputy county clerk and setting the salary. I am a deputy corporation counsel for the county of Maui. It's nice to see you all today, but today I'm submitting testimony on my own time and in my personal capacity. I have had the privilege of working with Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson since 2019, when I was hired as a deputy. These two women and leaders epitomize integrity, even in the face of unprecedented challenges. They lead by example and are well respected by those who have worked with them. Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to the office of the county clerk, and it is appropriate for their compensation to reflect that. Their legal acumen and qualifications as experienced attorneys and litigators will assist the office of the county clerk in heading off future costly litigation. The proposed salary for Ms. Thompson and Ms. Lutie are, the proposed salaries are reasonable and appropriate. Ms. Thompson and Ms. Lutie far exceeded my expectations as teachers, mentors, and leaders. The last few years have been fraught with challenges, as you all well know, such as the COVID-19 pandemic. These two have handled a myriad of obstacles with resolve and grace. During times of heightened stress and uncertainty, Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson remained composed, fair, and always maintained an open door for their employees and staff. When there was extra work, Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson picked it up, working weekends for months on end. We were all encouraged by the example that they set and felt motivated to keep moving forward through the trying months where we experienced heightened workloads. Despite the excellent work ethic and integrity exhibited by these two, Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson have endured slander and defamation. There are many baseless accusations and conspiratorial threads of conversation circulating throughout factions of the community. Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson have consistently handled these unfounded allegations and disturbing comments with dignity and grace. The role of the corporation counsel should not be a political one. To represent the county as the client necessarily means that the office must be an independent one. Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson have excelled at this exceptional challenge. In fulfilling their ethical and legal obligations, Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson have had to make difficult decisions contrary to the personal objectives of certain extremely vocal individuals. The vocal and public opposition to some legal opinions and decisions is evidence of Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson fulfilling their ethical and legal obligations. The corporation counsel must represent the county and is unable to provide legal advice and representation to private individuals. This occasionally results in disgruntled members of the public. Social media platforms provide an avenue for individuals and entities to spread misinformation and hurl baseless insults. As a government attorney, I strive to meet such challenges with the level of professionalism exhibited by Ms. Lutie and Ms. Thompson. Thank you very much for your time today. I wish you all a happy new year, and I look forward to seeing you in the next week.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Thank you.
The next testifier is Junya Nakoa.
How's it? Back again. Uh, Rick, you know, Moana Lutie would screw us behind the people up plenty of times. You know, you guys heard about the injection wells. We had all our canoe paddlers come to their chambers and testify, you know, for this sort of thing and fix the problem. Because I coach paddling kids, a teaching program for the Pidu Kanu Club, and, you know, make the dulu go inside of water that we gotta reclaim. Teach his kids, nuts. Yeah, so even the Kohoma villages, it's screwed by one crooked developer, you know, all that kind of stuff. So I don't tell you right now. I am strongly opposed against Moana Lutie and the kind, Rochelle Thompson, whatever, all that kind, for be a county clerk, yeah, you know. I guess I allow boisterous, disgruntled public, because I steadily make noise about this, yeah? I am a native Hawaiian, speaking about, about opposition of Moana Lutie, you know, and especially, especially the pay. Jesus, man. You like become a county clerk, yeah? You get hired for what they pay, already been paying, what Kathy Kauru them was making, and all the brother. Yeah? Why, why, you know, everybody saying, you know, equal pay and all that kind of stuff and whatnot. What about them? They was bossing their colleagues. You know, the county council, you guys didn't do so much, and they stayed there hours after hours. And now you gonna make these lawyers come in for the county clerk, yeah, work, that I don't think they ever went run one elections, you know, and all that stuff. But it's so funny. Oh, now they like come county clerk, and they like, they like get lawyers pay. Sorry, it's not one lawyer's that kind position. Yeah, I heard all the pay for the OCS and all that kind. Hey, then a lawyer's gonna do supposedly, we gotta listen to, yeah? Okay, I can't understand about digging in a pay, but I'm sorry. No way you guys can justify. No way. I don't know how the heck Alice Lee was saying she can justify the pay. Oh, my God. You, you, you let me, you let, you let get a lawyer pay and all that kind of stuff, but you guys, all the guy that went work for her, worked with her and all that kind of stuff, but they go be a lawyer. Look, come on, you go take up a county clerk's position and ask for get lawyer pay. Yeah, we get, we get one corp counsel ready at the new mail and put in. We don't need one other corp counsel, whatever, inside a county clerk. We need a county clerk. So if you think you, you, you worth the money, the $150,000, go, 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 go work someplace else. Go get, go take somebody else, one, one other crooked developer money and all that stuff. Not take, not take our taxpayers' money. Over $100,000 you guys like on raise. My God. That is totally disrespectful for the people who are doing this job, like Kathy Kauru there. Totally, totally, totally disrespectful. Pieces, pieces off. You guys, you guys so-called lawyers can come over here and tell you how much you guys like your pay? Go be a damn lawyer. No need to take the county clerk. Sorry, I took my circle, but I say I'm mad. Yeah, I'm strongly opposed. So, all you buggers, listening to us guys, we never work for these people, so we talking from, you know, passionately. We're the taxpayers. We're the taxpayers. Mahalo. Jukes. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Nakoa. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you so very much, Mr. Nakoa.
Chair, there is no other individual signed up to testify on this item. If anyone, I see Ms. Diney, Lucy Andine.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Lucy Andine testifying as a private citizen who has sat through these council organization meetings for 30 years. I was here in the 90s watching them. I was here in the 2000s, the 2010s, and now it's the 2020s. And I have to say that I'm not speaking for or against the motion at this point, but I think as a person who has had to raise a lot of money to challenge decisions that the county has made, and almost always, these decisions have been overturned in court. The organizations, the Hawaiian organizations and the community organizations that brought up these points were vindicated in the courts. These are not frivolous allegations. I have to say that I think we could have a better process. I think that it was sad to hear a corp counsel just dismiss what citizens say that they're pain in seeing our laws not followed and having to take a very expensive and time-consuming recourse. People have to, they have to suspend their personal lives. The Kapu family has had to give their whole lives to have justice for their land. And why isn't the county on their side? They are people. Why aren't the county corp consuls being part of the solution? And I know this can happen, because years ago, when Brian Moto was our corp counsel, he reached out to groups when there were legal things threatened or filed. He reached out and he said, but let's talk about this, you know? I hear you have some concerns. Let's figure out how we could address those concerns. So not all those matters needed to go to court. In fact, most of them didn't. Does this save the county money? I think so. So, I can't speak to the qualifications of either of these two ladies. They both treated me nicely, the county clerk. I just haven't, haven't happened to agree with Ms. Lutie on the wastewater treatment position the county took, that took endless years of my time, 13 years of citizen time, and many, many meetings. This time I could have spent, you know, with my loved ones and family, but I didn't, because I had to be in discussions about possible settlements, settlements falling through, this and that, and then all the way to the Supreme Court, who said the county should have done it better. So, please use the wisdom that's in your hearts here, council members. I can't tell you what to do, but I can tell you that our system and our corp consul's office could definitely achieve more excellence and gain more respect in the eyes of citizens, especially native Hawaiians. Laws are being broken all the time about how native Hawaiian burials, sites, et cetera, are treated. And we need heroes. We need people to step up and say, we are the county, and we're standing up for these laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diney. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Diney.
Chair, the next testifier is Jason Econamu, and currently he's the last person signed up to testify.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Congratulations, all of you, and Chair Kama, thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Jason Econamu. I am testifying on behalf of myself this evening as a Wailuku resident and as a local attorney. I have been on the board of the Maui Food Bank with Moana Lutie for several years now. She is a great board member. She's exceptional. She's got a great legal mind. I say that as somebody who has disagreed with positions that corporation counsel has taken, and I've been critical of legal positions that corporation counsel has taken. But these are great attorneys, and they're good people, and they're very capable. Currently, we have eight members of the county council. Wailuku is not being represented because one of the candidates and 30 other residents determined that the person you had running the elections didn't do the right thing. I don't think it was purposeful, but maybe it was negligent. Maybe they didn't do a great job because we could get a higher caliber of person in that position who could figure it out, who would have acted differently. I think Moana and Rochelle are brilliant people. I think they're going to serve Maui County to the really high level that they already have. Being an attorney is difficult. Your ethical obligation is to provide zealous representation for your client. The fact that they were providing zealous representation for the county of Maui, even when some residents didn't agree with it, demonstrates their commitment to their profession and to their ethical obligation. So, I'm sorry for all the residents who feel personally slighted, but this was their job. This is their profession, what they're called to do as service to this county, and they did it well. I ask that this body allow them to continue to serve the county of Maui as clerk and deputy. And, yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. They have my endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Econamoo. Members, question for the testifier? Mr. Econamoo, you have a question, if I, Member Palton.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify, he is speaking on behalf of himself?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Econamoo? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, I could say I'm the chair of the Maui Food Bank Board, and they're all pretty excited about this, too. They think very highly of Moana as well. But we didn't have an official motion saying, you know, that they officially endorse, and I, so I don't want to say that, but, but, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Econamoo. No questions other than that. Thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Faith Chase, and she is currently the last person signed up to testify on these resolutions.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, council members. Yes, this is Faith Chase. I just need to, this is very emotional. I just need to speak in opposition of, what, 23, is it 12 and, two and three?
13, yes. 23, 12 and 13.
Thank you. I've actually learned a lot listening to my fellow Maui residents and citizens, and this is really, really emotional. I'm not sure who, who, I find it hard to believe that the audacity of this raise on top of the position and everything that's in question is actually in front of us. I just need to express to my council members and my colleagues who know and trust and believe in me that I'm in opposition to this, and I really do, I do really like the idea of waiting to see the applicant pool in a larger spectrum, as Councilmember Palton mentioned. I'm kind of at a loss at words. I feel like this is, with all the myriad of issues that we have, and the sensitive, the cultural sensitivity, sensibility issues that we have, but this is literally feels like- but this is literally feels like the twisting of a knife. That's all I need to say. I just, I need you all to know that I'm in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Members, question for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Chase. Clerk?
Testifier is Mercer Chubby Visens, followed by Ari Levine.
Good afternoon, Chair. Congratulations on your appointment. As most of you know, I have been following the legislative process on Maui for over thirty years. I was formerly with Matson and Alexander and Baldwin as their land manager, and I think that I have a pretty good grasp of, of what's going on in the county council. I'm calling today because some of the testimony I've heard today is very, very disparaging to me. My mother, who has passed, was pure Hawaiian. These people that have come there to testify that they, that they're, they're disagreeing on the grounds that she is not protecting the culture, or she's abusing the culture, have got it wrong. That's not what we're testifying about today. We're testifying about the quality and the quantity of the individual and the deputy. These are people of high, high integrity. I personally know them. I followed them through the, through the pandemic when they worked eighty straight days and not complained. So how can anybody who does not know what they were doing during the pandemic have the audacity to accuse them of improprieties? It offends me as a Hawaiian that they use the cultural horn to try and sway some of the council members. I wish that each and every one of you look into your hearts. Look into your hearts because this is what we want for Maui. We want the very, very best. We've put you in office because we feel that you are the very best. Now let's step up the bat. Step up the bat and honor the people that are trying to make Maui a better place to live. Maui is my home, and I will not stand by quietly. I'm not intended to testify today, but I couldn't in good conscience sit back and watch how we were disparaged. Most of you are Hawaiian also, and you should be insulted by the likes of Clara Pana, who spent many years on the mainland before she decided to come home. And all of a sudden, she is the, the queen of know-it-all. I doubt it. Chair Kama, excuse me if I'm overstepping my bounds, but I am very, very passionate about my Hawaiian culture. I'm passionate about the council that runs our laws and Maui in general. Maui is my home, and I will not sit quietly while people disparage some of the good people in our community. Congratulations to all of you who won fair elections. Congratulations again, Chair Kama. Wish you all Godspeed. And remember, when you leave your offices and you talk to someone who is part Hawaiian or even Hawaiian at heart, remember to say ahuiho. Ahuiho. We are all one. We're all together, guys, whether we're from Hana, Lanai, Lanai, wherever. Thank you very much for letting me speak by peace. I will sleep better tonight knowing that I got this off my chest. I love Maui, and I wish each and every one of you Godspeed. Aloha.
Thank you very much, Mr. Visens. Members, question for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you so very much. Mahalo and aloha. Ahuiho.
Ahuiho.
The next testifier is Ari Levine, to be followed by Corey Visens.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to have this meeting. I just wanted to voice my support for the appointment of the county clerk and her deputy. Having worked with both of them, I've found them to be extremely professional and hardworking. I would say that we should consider maybe a fitness work. Instead of, like, I guess abuse has been based over the last seven months with these two and many other public servants. I hope that we can move towards more discourse. It looks like I'm muted.
No, you're fine.
And that, you know, in order to find qualified candidates, we, we need to treat them appropriately and pay them appropriately, but it's hard to imagine how it takes the public abuse consistently, the public servants that do. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you so very much, sir.
Chair, the, I feel like I'm lying to you, but the last person currently testified to, testify is Corey Visens.
Mr. Visens?
Hi. Aloha, Chair. Congratulations on your appointment and to the rest of our council members on your inauguration today. I am here to testify on Resolutions twenty-three twelve and twenty-three thirteen. I've had the privilege of being the private secretary. I, first off, I just want to say I am testifying today in the private capacity. I am a county of Maui employee. I am here to testify in twenty-three twelve and twenty-three thirteen. I am, was the private secretary to Ms. Moana Ludi, as well as a secondary secretary to First Deputy Rochelle Thompson. When I speak, speak, I'll be speaking on both of them. Both of them have, both of them have always conducted themselves in the highest professional standard. Their work ethic was unquestionable. Their resilience to the comments or the derogatory insinuations made against them over the four years as a member of their department and directly someone who worked with them was really heartbreaking some time. We in the department knew what kind of individuals they were, the highest integrity and also commitment to this community and their service to the administration as well as the legislative body. As I said, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with them. I think that their expertise and knowledge and commitment will be nothing but assets to the county clerk's office in support of the legislative body. I hope that you will vote for them and elevate our standards of elections under their guidance with their knowledge of the law. We'd be very fortunate to have them, and as said earlier by some of my peers, it doesn't matter that they have a law degree or the job requires nothing of that, but it's an asset in this case. That's all I have today. Again, it's been a privilege. They saw us through COVID. We all worked side by side with them. They made sure we were okay, the countless hours. And I hope that you will see through some of the conspiracies and the fraudulent, the fraudulent commentary that has been put forth today. Thank you for your time and all the best to you in your next two years as our council members.
Thank you, Ms. Visens. Members, any questions for our testifier? Seeing none, thank you so very much, Ms. Visens. Clerk?
Current last testifier is Ian Chan Hodges.
Good evening, council members, and congratulations to Chair Kama. Okay, but when we first met over thirty years ago, I couldn't really imagine you being Chair of the council, so that's, I'm very excited for you. I want to testify on these two items, twenty-three twelve and twenty-three thirteen, and kind of follow up on some of the previous testimony I wasn't planning on testifying. I'm still wearing a shirt I was wearing from working outside. But I testified to say that there were some previous testifiers who, one of them was attorney, who talked about actually following, you know, the highest ethical standards of attorneys. And in previous testimony, you heard that this council, or actually the previous council, I'm sorry, actually instructed Moana Ludi to actually work with Brendan Maravava and Apoikakuwa and Bruce Jacobs to pursue actions against Bank of America and basically refused to do so. I just wanted to point out that refusing to actually follow instructions from your client is actually a pretty serious violation of the Code of Conduct for Attorneys. I think that should be taken into consideration. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the, some of the previous testifiers have gotten pretty personal about this, and I'll say, obviously, I, I tend to support the decisions of certain council members over other ones, but this shouldn't be personal. This should be about what the right decision to make is. And I wanted also add that I, Yuki Leesukabura actually made a motion earlier today that I wholeheartedly agreed with, that she did not get a second nod, which I was surprised at, but I wanted to be able to support what she did there. But going back to these two agenda items, every council member here ran on at least having a high importance of affordable housing. And I could say from personal experience of all the hours and hours and hours that QBD has put into trying to hold Bank of America accountable, that the actions of Corporation Council or lack of action resulted in delay in, in reaching a settlement with Bank of America, and that settlement could actually result in hundreds of millions of dollars for affordable housing. So I'd like to be able to raise that issue. And the final thing I'll say, and I hope that doesn't sound too inappropriate, but I think one of the things that everybody who works at the county and the state knows is that one of the important things is the last, the average of the last three years of your salary is sort of your high three if you started working for the county or state before two thousand and twelve. So the fact that Moana, Ms. Ludi will be receiving a pretty significant bump in pay will actually go towards her retirement, and I believe she's actually approaching thirty years. So that's one of the, take, take consideration is your decision here also decides what the level of her retirement is, which of course is up to you, and she has served the county a long time. But I wanted, wanted to testify and bring up those points and also say that there, there have been, as you probably noticed, both the testimony in opposition has been for the community, and most of the testimony in support has been from either employees, family members of employees of the county. And what we're all trying to strive for is more affordable housing, and it'd be nice to actually have people working for the county who actually support that. So thank you again, and congratulations to all of you, and the credit to the new council. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Members, question for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you so very much for being here. Aloha. Clerk?
Chair, at this time, there are no further individuals signed up to testify on these resolutions. If anyone would like to testify on these matters, please make it known to us by either unmuting or letting us know in chambers. This is the last call.
I'd like to testify.
Proceed.
Aloha, this is James Forrest. Wanted to say good night to you guys. I'm signing off. It's been a pleasure working with you. As far as this item is concerned, I was really impressed by the employees that came out to support their boss. I think that goes a long way. You guys know that I disagree with corp counsel quite often at your defense, but, you know, you couldn't have done better today. You, you, you assigned Chair Kama. Hopefully she can find some peace and some mediation tonight to get you guys through this. And, you know, the election is what it is. I just think that you guys coming together tonight and in the future, the next two years, that, that's going to mean more than any of these appointments today. So I just want to wish you guys luck and congratulate everyone on getting elected, and just wanted to say that. And as far as the Ms. Moana Ludi, just, you know, it's, she's been around for a long time. I admire her. I admire David Roxx for sticking around. It's, it's not an easy thing to do to survive in, in county employment, and you do take a lot of punches. But it was really impressive seeing her employees stick up for her today. And that's, you know, I say that knowing that I opposed her on a lot of matters before the county that were really important to me. But, you know, the people spoke, and now just, I hope, and I, I leave, leave all my prayers with Tasha Kama and that she can unite you guys and to get through this today.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Members, any questions for Mr. James Forrest? Seeing none, seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much, and kudos to you, to Mr. Forrest.
Thank you. If there's anyone who would like to be heard on these resolutions, please make yourself known. At this time, Chair, there are no other testifiers. This is the last call for public testimony.
This is Brad Salter, and I would just like to have a brief testimony, please.
Yes. Proceed.
Okay, so, you know, I, I, without really discussing the merits of, of the, the people that are being considered for these positions, you know, we're looking at pay raises, and have we really looked at the pool of other possible candidates that, that might fill this position and might be better qualified? So I would just encourage council to perhaps either hold off on making this decision until they've had an opportunity to look at other possibilities and consider the, the extreme pay raise. Is that really appropriate in, in this time right now? So really, that's all I wanted to bring up. I want to take a look and make sure that council has had the opportunity to look at all possible candidates for this particular position and has an opportunity to consider those people and look at their resumes and take public testimony regarding that. So thank you very much for this last minute. I wasn't planning to testify either, but I think that's an important consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, question for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you so very much, sir. Clerk?
Thank you.
Chair, we don't have anyone else signed up to testify, but if there is anyone who would like to testify, please let us know, whether you're in chamber or you can unmute on blue jeans or phone. This is my fifth last call. It appears that there is no one else to testify.
So members, are there any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony for Resolution twenty-three dash twelve and twenty-three dash thirteen? No objections.
No objections, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we should take the resolutions one at a time, beginning with twenty-three twelve.
Chair, you have before you Resolution twenty-three dash twelve entitled Appointing Moana Ludi as County Clerk and Setting the Salary.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Uwuhodgens.
Thank you, and I've been told I need to talk across of this, so hopefully I sound okay. So while I'm in support currently of Resolution twenty-three, twelve, and thirteen, I would like to make an amendment, please, to their appointment and postpone for two weeks.
There's an amendment? There's an amendment, a motion on the floor to postpone this for two weeks and a second by Member Paulton. Right? That's an amendment. Okay. Yes, Mr. Sinensee.
Question. Would we need a main motion first to amend it?
I think so. So do you want to make the main motion and then we'll...
Yeah. Move. So I'll make the motion.
To adopt.
To adopt.
Resolution... I mean, yeah, that's right. Move to adopt Resolution 23-12. Okay, so it's been moved by Member Sinensee, seconded by Member Yuki Le Suggamura to adopt Resolution 2312. Discussion. And then, because the discussion would be Councilmember Uwuhodgens amendment, seconded by Councilmember Paulton's second. So now we're looking at the amendment to postpone for two weeks, she said, right? Okay, so, members, do you understand what that motion is? Okay, so... I have a discussion. Go to the secondary of the motion. Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Rotz did inform me that the posting was taken down when Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson was chosen. And that prior to it being taken down, no applicants were received. I'm not sure how much media was directed to the openings. But I think, you know, if we can keep it open one more week and see what's out there and then, you know, make a decision at that time. I don't have a problem with Moana Ludi and Rochelle Thompson being able to do the job. But I do think that we owe it to the county as a whole to see what's out there for at least a week. And, you know, since it was brought up, if Ms. Koohu's name was on the resolution, I would wholeheartedly support her. I think she did a fabulous job and, you know, to have Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson come up together, I think, is important. It's important to have somebody that's going to watch your back in a position such as this. And as to the point about lawyers, I do think that the position needs to be lawyers. When we appointed the former inhabitants of those seats, we were in a crunch and nobody wanted the job.
You're right.
And we did an open call for applicants. And after seeing and interviewing the applicants, we chose from inside our Office of Counsel Services. So I think, you know, it's only right at the start of the term to do an open call, at least for another week. And while there is a legal challenge going on at this case, I don't think the blame can be put on just the clerk. It's it's the office as a whole, but the clerk takes the responsibility, good and bad. And in my book, I think that Kathy Cole, who did an excellent job being thrown into the position right before a pandemic, right before the first ever vote by mail. And so if her name was on the resolution, I would wholeheartedly support it. I don't have a problem supporting Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson, but I just think that in response to what the public is seeing, we can take a look at what's out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? Yes, Member Ronald Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. I would like to get the opinion of either our volunteer OCS attorneys or Corporation Council regarding the procedure in making a main motion to adopt a resolution and then amend it by delaying it. I think that's a procedural matter in tabling the resol and just postponing it rather than making a motion to adopt and then amending the motion, the main motion. Anyone would like... Any takers?
Mr. Whitaker.
If you don't mind, I can take this. You're correct that you didn't have to make a main motion. And you could have just deferred, moved to postpone the item or defer the item to a date certain, which I think is effectively, you know, what the amendment does. But you're correct that you did not need to make the main motion.
Mahalo, Mr. Whitaker. Okay, so like if we then adopt the main motion, it's basically a procedural action that we're taking to postpone the resolution. My second question is regarding the timing. So posting deadlines is six days under sunshine law. And so I consideration or thoughts on, instead of putting, you know, two weeks, and it's not clear whether it's business weeks or calendar weeks. Well, I guess they would be the same. That we would postpone it to the next council meeting instead of putting a timeframe on it? Whoever?
I think that would be a question that's more appropriately answered by OCS, but as far as Robert's Rules of Order goes, either would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Rotz.
Thank you, Chair. And actually, thanks to the council's action, we'll regard ourselves as actually working for the body and able to provide legal advice, even though technically none of the resolutions take effect until the meeting adjourns. But I'll just point out a couple of things. The Charter does say that there shall be two council meetings per month. We know we will have another council meeting sometime in January. Today's meeting does count as one of the two. We don't have an established council calendar yet, so we don't know for sure when that second meeting will be. So it might be cleaner to say postpone to the next council meeting, because we just don't know at the moment, I don't believe, what the next date will be. Just another quick observation. County clerk is a position recognized in the Charter. And if that position were vacant and there were no deputy, the office would be left without leadership for a period of time. So that would pose a challenge, perhaps, something for the body to consider. We did have an instance last term where we also had clerk and deputy county clerk vacant. And the council chair at that time designated OCS leadership to oversee the office for a week. So potentially, a similar arrangement could be made.
Mahalo, Mr. Rotz. Okay, so a follow-up to the last comment that you made in OCS filling in. So when we approved the interim appointment of Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson as interim clerk and deputy clerk, that was just for the duration of this meeting and and they will no longer serve as interim. Is that correct?
Chair, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't know the answer to that for sure. I do know that in prior organizational meetings, when we went back and looked at the minutes, the appointment of a temporary or interim clerk was just for purposes of ensuring that there were staff to run the meeting until a clerk was actually appointed later that day. I didn't see any instance where the clerk was not ultimately appointed formally for the term at the organizational meeting.
Okay, mahalo for responding. So I guess, are there any laws that would prevent us from enabling either Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson or Ms. Koohu and Mr. Kruger to serve as acting clerk and deputy clerk until such time the council adopts resolutions to assign those positions to people?
Thank you, Chair, if I may. So Ms. Fujita was pointing out that the current clerk and deputy county clerk are the ones that were current up until noon today, when the term expired, have now been moved to no positions in the Office of Counsel Services based on the resolution adopted today. I think an interim or temporary appointment of someone as county clerk and deputy county clerk probably could be made. Just a couple of considerations. Any council action requires a minimum of five votes. The Charter says that the council acts by ordinance or by resolution. And you have, before you today, two resolutions with specific people referenced for county clerk and deputy county clerk. Perhaps the resolutions could be amended to change the term instead of the full term, if that's what the body's intention is, to a two-week period or whenever the next council meeting may be. I don't think you could have names that aren't referenced on today's agenda be placed into those resolutions.
Mahalo, Ms. Rotz, and mahalo for your indulgence, Chair and fellow councilmembers. My last question is, since we have a main motion on the floor, what if we amended the resolution to have the term end at the next council meeting? And that way, they can serve as acting or interim clerk and deputy clerk until we provide those positions permanent clerk and deputy clerks?
Yeah. Indu.
Yes, Chair. Yes, I think that is appropriate.
Mahalo, Chair. So we have a motion to amend the main motion on the floor currently. And if the two, the maker of the motion and the second or like that idea of allowing Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson to serve as interim until the next council meeting, then if they will withdraw their motion, and I can make a new motion to amend the main motion to enable them to serve as interim clerk and deputy clerk.
Okay. Speaker of motion, one.
Oh, it's John. Thank you.
And... Thank you. Ms. Ronald Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you.
I move to amend both... I'm sorry. Does the main motion include both Resolutions 13 and 12 and 13? Okay. So I move to amend Resolution 23-12 and 23-13 to read for the term ending. And we don't have a time certain. So I would like to seek the advice of our either Corporation Council or OCS attorneys on whether it would need to be a time, a date certain, or if it could say the next council meeting.
Chair, just before we go that route, so the only motion on the floor is 2312, just to be clear. 2313 has not been yet taken up.
Okay, and then I can make that motion to include both to the main motion, and that way we'll take up both one time.
Okay.
Thank you.
But then the answer to my question.
Yes, either next meeting or in two weeks, whichever you prefer, it would be fine.
Okay, so if it said for the term ending in the second council meeting in January 2023, would that be appropriate?
Second.
Yes, that would be an appropriate amendment.
Okay, so before I make that motion, mahalo, Member Johnson, I would like to amend the main motion to include Resolution 23-13 in the main motion for adoption.
Thank you.
Again.
Yeah. So it's been moved by Member Ronald Fernandez, seconded by Member Johnson, to include both resolutions in the main motion. And with the amendment being term ending at the second council meeting in January 2023. Is that correct, Ms. Ronald Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, discussion, Member Paulton.
Just clarification that you meant the end of the second meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Yuki Le Suggamura, any question?
Yeah, thank you. So just clarification on that. Then the salaries would be, I guess, paraded, but the amounts listed on the resolution. So Moana Ludi, her salary would be 156,982, and Rochelle Thompson per the resolution is 149,132. But those would be the relevant salary amounts for this short period.
Final order. That is not the motion that we're speaking to at the moment. We can take that up after the motion. You'll men?
Okay, I just want a clarification on the period, so I will.
So, members, are we clear about what the motion is in terms of the... I think what we're going to do at the next council meeting is actually look to securing our clerk and our deputy clerk at the next council meeting. We should have one by that time. That's what we're... That's what Ms. Paulton's asking, right? That by the end of the second meeting, we'll have that secured. Yes?
Mahalo, Chair. And then I guess I have a question for our attorneys again on whether, when we post the next resolution to appoint a clerk and deputy clerk, would they need to be named or could they be blank? They would need to be named, right?
So that the testifiers know, the public knows who you're considering, you can put a list of names or you could put a specific name. But it would be difficult to receive testimony on a blank.
Mahalo, Mr. Whitaker. So, Chair, when we do post the resolution for the next council meeting in considering clerk and deputy clerk, can we please have the list of names of applicants as an exhibit as we do boards and commissions? So that we can fill in the name and give the public an opportunity to testify on those who have applied.
I think that can be done. Right, Mr. Rotz?
Thank you, Chair. We would need to take direction from the council chair, I think, on exactly what procedures to implement. When the ad went up previously, it was at Chair Lee's direction. And we hadn't got to the point yet where we were setting up a team to receive the applications, vet the applications. And that normally does take a considerable amount of time for a position like this. But at the council's direction and with the council chair's approval, we could try to accelerate the normal process.
Yes, please do.
Chair?
Yes, Ms. Ronald Fernandez?
I would like to friendly amend my motion to, instead of it just being a week, for it to be a month. So the first, the end of the first council meeting in February 2023 instead, so that we can give the public some time to see that the ad has been posted, to get their applications together and submitted. And as Mr. Rotz pointed out, have a team that ready to receive and provide recommendations on who we would consider at that time. And Ms... Okay.
I accept that second as a friendly amendment.
Oh, very good. Thank you. So, Mr. Rotz, is that possible to what Ms. Ronald Fernandez is offering?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Good? Okay, very good.
Chair, may I ask a clarifying question as I move on? So the resolutions currently list salaries, and I believe Councilmember Suggimura asked, you know, if they're going to get paid. you know, if they're going to get paid based on what's listed in the resolutions. So the salaries, and there is an annual salary, so if you keep it as is, then they would just get paid prorata for a month under that salary. But if that's not your intention, you should amend that part of the resolution as well.
Mahalo, Mr. Whitaker. I was planning to let this motion be what this motion is for now, take a vote on that, and then we can take up salaries after, so that we're not piling too many things into one motion, if the members are okay with that.
Okay. Clerk? Go call vote for the.
Chair.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to amend the main motion right now that we would be voting on is to amend the term ending to the first council meeting in February, the end of the first February 2023 council meeting. For, and, I'm sorry, let me restate that. The motion to amend is to include in the adoption, the main motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash twelve, to include Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen as well. And then to amend both resolutions to a term ending at the end of the first council meeting in February 2023. Mahalo, Chair.
All right. So, members, are we clear about what we are voting on?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thanks. Just if I could ask David Roth or Tracy, so is that enough time for you, based upon what he said? It's not set up yet. It has to be worked out with you, Chair Kama, and vetted. Is that enough time, the first council meeting in February, or do you need the second council meeting?
We usually do post for about a month, you know, notices for recruitment. We could see where we're at, and then council could always extend, you know, if there aren't enough applications.
I see. So if we did say, just clarifying, then if we did say the first council meeting in February, our calendar's not set, so we don't know what date that is, that it may be enough time for you, and if not, how do you get back to us to let us know that you need that extension?
We would communicate with the chair and get direction from the chair.
So that may be enough time?
Possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Rollins-Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. So the intention was also to have an exhibit with the list of applicants with the resolution at the February council meeting. Would that need to be explicitly stated in the resolution today as well, or is that intention clear?
I think the intention's clear.
We understand the council's intention. Mahalo, Ms. Fujita. Mahalo, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, members, are you ready to vote? Okay.
Councilmember Shane Sinancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Noheilani Uhuajens?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
No.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins-Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yukile Sugimura?
No.
Chair Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Chair, you have six ayes, two noes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yes, yes, Yukile Sugimura.
I wonder if Kiani Rollins-Fernandez is going to amend it as one more amendment to talk about the salary? Or should I?
You can do it if you want to.
There you go. Yep, she's giving you.
So for this, for this period, then, the salary amount to be used to pay the temporary clerks, I guess, is that, is that what we're calling them now for this period, would be based upon the salary listed in the two resolutions, twenty-three twelve and twenty-three thirteen? That's my motion.
Motion, motion.
To use the salaries during this period for the range based upon the amounts listed in Resolutions twenty-three twelve and twenty-three thirteen. So the salary for Moana Ludi is one fifty.
Final order.
Yes.
Mahalo, Chair. Mahalo, Members Sugimura. So it's already stated on the resolution, and if we adopt the resolution as it's stated, then that is what would stand. It would only be amended if we make a motion to amend it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I still want clarification.
I.
Just withdraw. We're fine. I want to make sure that they get compensated.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, where are we now, clerk? Yes, Ms. Rollins-Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. I move to amend the salaries for, in both Resolution twenty-three dash twelve and twenty-three dash thirteen to the salaries that they, Ms. Ludi and Ms. Thompson were making as the Corporation Council and Deputy Corporation Council.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the salaries for our clerk could be the same as their salary as court counsel. Is that what you're saying? Okay, so it's been moved.
Chair.
Yeah.
Tracy.
Yes.
Just to clarify that the salary, that the current salaries for the clerk and the deputy clerk are the salaries that they were making as clerk counsel and deputy clerk counsel.
It's the same.
It's the same. Yeah. Okay, mahalo, Chair. Mahalo, Ms. Fujita. My understanding that it was, it was more.
Withdraw.
Okay. I withdrew my motion.
Okay, thank you. So you see, that was now again, clerk. Where are we?
As amended by Councilmember Kiani Rollins-Fernandez.
What was that again?
I withdrew my motion.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the motion that we made to include Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen and then the terms, we called for the question and it passed with two noes and the other ayes, yeah. We're on the main motion as amended. Call for the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we're just doing the main motion.
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rollins-Fernandez.
I know, it's your first day. So the main motion that's now on the floor for your consideration and your vote is both, are both Resolution twenty-three dash twelve and twenty-three dash thirteen with the amendments to the term ending in the first council meeting in February 2023. So that's what was amended with the intention of having the exhibits with the applicants listed in both clerk and deputy clerk. The salaries would stay the same because I withdrew that motion. So that's the main motion on the floor.
Is that clear, Mr. Cook? Gabe, clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Shane Sinancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Noheilani Uhu.
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins?
Aye.
Councilmember Gabe John?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yukile Sugimura?
No.
And Chair Tasha Kama?
Yes.
You have seven ayes, one no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Do it break till six twenty-five. Councils on recess. Six twenty-five. One minute, so.
Recording has stopped.
All looking for Member Johnson? Member. What? Oh. Okay. I have, um. Okay, one, two, three. Waiting for Kiani and Tamara. Members, please take your seats. Oh, I need to see. Aloha, members. So the Maui County Organizational Meeting will now reconvene. It is.
I've got Akaku on the line. He needs to count down. We're going with the countdown. Five, four.
Recording has started.
Thank you. So the Maui County Organizational Meeting of January 2nd, 2023 will now reconvene. Clark.
Going to be proceeding with the testimony on all the remaining items. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Kisa Lu, followed by Aram Armstrong. Kisa Lu, Aram Armstrong. It appears that they are not present. We'll move on to Lucie Anne Dene, followed by Livit Kalantina. Ms. Dene.
Thank you. To clarify, we are testifying on any of the remaining items. All right, that makes sense. Doing a great job, Chair Kama. You were born to be chair. Calm at the teller here. So let me see my little list here. I was hunting down food. All right. I signed up to testify on 23-4. And also 23-5, I believe. And 2311. So on 23-4, establishing the standing committees of the council and defining their duties. You know, this is really kind of an important role of the council, is setting up the committees. And making sure each committee not only has people that are committed to do the work of the committee, but also that the scope makes sense. So that the, for the public's participation, that a committee is covering things in a way that allows a thorough vetting for good decision-making. And I just have to comment, I do join in with some that testified before that, you know, we have some folks who have chaired committees for the last two or four years. They've done a very good job. And I know the politics have changed and everything, but, you know, in business, you just don't kind of jump a horse in midstream if it's already been going along. Just personally, I have to say that I participate in a lot of budget committee meetings because I'm on nine different nonprofit boards. And of course, always looking for, you know, support during budget time. And the budget process under current Chair Rollins Fernandez has been a dream. It has been so nice. You can go to your council member and say, you know, what are your priority projects you're going to put in? There's been all this stuff that didn't happen before and has made it easier for the public. I mean, you know, the budget hearings are the great theater process of our community. Everyone with their, you know, constituents and the little kids reading and, you know, everyone that does something worthy in our community lining up to plead their case. And I just have to say, I don't know if it was COVID or what, but it got easier to testify. You know, you could testify online and it was well organized and you could keep track of things. And the staff was helpful and friendly. And you had Michelle there, our former budget director, who could explain everything and where it was in the budget. So I really urge people to keep our current budget chair. It's, you know, Councilmember Sugimura has been doing a great job on infrastructure. And I know she's up for challenges, but is this the time to just be sort of switching chairs around? Also, I see that the Water and Infrastructure Committee is proposed. And I remember the years when we had a Water and Infrastructure Committee. And finally, it was just decided, it was just too much. It was better to break them into two components. And, you know, have water with agriculture or have water. In fact, I loved having the Agriculture and Public Trust Committee because water is a public trust and it was the first time that we acknowledged that it really is. And it is not just a commodity that goes with infrastructure. Sure, water gets delivered by pipes, but let's face it, water is delivered by a kua. It's delivered by God. And God doesn't make these pipes, you know. God makes ecosystems that produce water and store water. And so that's a whole different aspect than the infrastructure part of it. And I'm just wondering if putting those together is just going to be a recipe for not doing a very in-depth job on either important topic. So I would urge you in your considerations to, you know, give a good look to this and see if we have the right committee combinations. And then if we have people who have been working in these fields, like, you know, Mr. Johnson has been doing a bang-up job on implementing our Affordable Housing Plan. And I know agriculture is one of his passions as well, but could he continue doing this good work? Councilmember Paltrin has got us through our community plan process for two community plans. Believe me, I can remember the days when community plans took years to go through, not months. And she had a steady hand. She's been fair. She's listened to all. So, you know, there's been some good jobs done up there. And we should continue when can. I will move over to Reso 23-5. I haven't had a lot of time to look in depth at the rules of the councils that are being proposed. But the idea, I know it sounds wonderful to end every meeting at five o'clock, but, you know, sometimes that's just not possible. I worked for a council member, very dedicated council member, who was here sometimes till midnight preparing for the next day's meeting. And, you know, it is what it is. There's some issues and some things that are not easy. They're the tough decisions. They're what people are elected to do, is make those tough decisions, and it takes time. And just arbitrarily saying, well, we all go home at five. That doesn't make sense. And some of the other rules just seem like very, like, anti, you know, anti-public, basically. So is it possible that the rules could be reviewed? I know that we've had controversies about the rules in the past. I remember one meeting, what was it, four years ago or something? Maybe it was six years ago. There was like 100 people testifying about the rules. And these people aren't here today, but could there be a way of having more review of the rules rather than having it all to be debated out in a council meeting and take the whole council meeting? Could there be a little committee sort of formed, a rules committee, like an ad hoc or temporary investigative group or something? Just to streamline these rules and figure out, you know, what they should be. So, but they're not ready for prime time right now. And I fear that's just going to end up with a lot of debate and amendments and everything at your next council meeting if there, it was not time, I guess, tonight to do all this stuff after public testimony. But those are my thoughts. And then Resolution 2311, approving the State County Association's Executive Board Representative and Alternate. I think these are good choices. Councilmember Sugimura and Councilmember Paltrin have been very, very involved with this council. They've been very, very involved with the community. They both have served as committee chairs that are in areas where it's great to network with others and learn how, you know, counties can work together for added clout. So it's a very important role and they're both like real sociable people that like talking to people. So I think they're a good fit and would definitely recommend adoption of that resolution as is. So thank you for your long hours today and for hearing me out. Mahalo.
Members, question for the testifier? Thank you so much, Ms. Dene.
Oh, man, I just made the time, too.
The next testifier is Livit Kalantine, followed by Dick Mayer. Moving on. Or is there? Oh, there's Dick Mayer.
I'm here. I'm just waiting for Clementine. Is she coming? Is she speaking?
No, no one has responded to that call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Thank you very much. I wrote all of you regarding 23-4, council committees and chairs. It's a different schema than the one on the docket today, but I'd like to make some comments about it. I urge you that you just delete that list. And between now and your next meeting, and by the way, you could adjourn this meeting, I would imagine, and be able to hold, you don't have to wait two weeks, you could adjourn it. In between, I would like you to look over your committee structure and the best people to be the chairs. I'm going to make the following suggestions based on my considerable experience working with you folks. And I'm very pleased to say, all of you who were carryovers all got re-elected. Two people left the council. They have new people in there. And I hope you'll all be able to work well together the next two years. For the great, great committee, I would urge you to select Yuki Lei. I saw her work closely with Mike Molina on the bike bill and think that she would be an excellent person now with the experience she has had with the government to chair that committee. With regard to the Budget and Finance Committee, I think Kiani did a brilliant job. It's very complicated, needs attention to details. And Kiani did this and made significant improvements in the process. And I think she can continue doing that very well. I would get a new committee. Excuse me, the Housing and Environmental Management Committee. I would put those two together. They deal with the refuse from all the homes and the housing issues. And there are many issues there. And have Gabe continue. He made a lot of initiatives with the housing plan. And I think he needs to see that get fulfilled and get completed. Agriculture and Water Committee, I would urge you to continue that association. Shane did an excellent job working with the new Agriculture Department, the Water Authority amendments that we have now and implementing that, getting that implement. And I think he would make an excellent chair for that. The Infrastructure, Public Works and County-Owned Land, Tom Cook. I worked closely with Tom when he was on GPAC with me. Have a great admiration for his interest and his experience in the construction industry. And I think he would be excellent for Infrastructure, Public Works, and Managing County-Owned Lands. Hawaiian Affairs, Oi, the new department and the Hawaiian, I'm sorry, I mispronounced it. And Human Concerns Committee, Tasha, I believe, would be able to excellently bring her passion to that committee and would be able to tie together those very much human-based concerns that she has. Two more. The Public Safety Committee would be a brand-new committee. The council has, I think, neglected its authority over the fire and police departments and even emergency management and homelessness issues. I think that department is something that should be, that should be a committee of the council. Yeah, the fire and police have their own, you know, commissions, but so does water and planning. That's no excuse for the council not to have it on their agenda. And so I would have a Public Safety Committee and ask that Noe take over that role and deal with homeless issues as well, something she's familiar with, coming from Paia. And lastly, the Planning and Land Use Committee, I would recommend that Tamara continue. She's done excellent work in that. I think she would have a close working relationship with the new Planning Director, Kathleen Aoki. I know who's lived on the West Side for a long time. And they would be able to work together on that issues. Those are my suggestions. And I'm urging you not to adopt your resolution today, 23-4, today. Put it on hold, come back with a committee of two people. And you can always add, besides the two council members, you can add staff, David Eratz or other people you think would be good to help put together a well-balanced group of people who can look at the issues that the county will be facing over the next two years and into the future after that. So those are my recommendations and I wish you all well, not just a Happy New Year, but a very successful and very happy and accomplishing two years as council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members, questions for the testifier? Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Aram Armstrong, to be followed by Clarapana.
Thank you. Sorry, it is late. I just had a little bit of coffee, so I'm like, I can rally. Right. Okay. Testifying on behalf of myself. I wanted to continue my testimony from a little bit earlier in this, well, hours ago, hours ago. I'm so thankful that Dick Mayer just shared his recommendations because I think he's really thought through the appointments. I think the structural nature of how the committees are formed and who's on them. There are certain principles that I would just like to share, the ones that I came up with myself that might help and ones that came up through this ChatGPT thing. So for me, it's really just about, do you have some sense of experience, what's your track record is? Do you have the kuliana? Like, I was surprised he brought up houselessness in Paia. And that's definitely a huge thing that we see every day driving. So that was like, just do you have that experience? I have a couple more principles. Let me just go through them. The five factors, kuliana, track record, professionalism, neutrality. So if there's a bias or conflict of interest, that would be something like a warning. And aloha, if you have like passion and love for this topic, so that's what I'd like to see. I asked ChatGPT, just because I'm trying to see how this works out to help us augment and be more efficient as citizens, as county council members, as teams that might support you. It came up with these factors of competence, integrity, fairness, inclusivity, transparency, accountability, and efficiency. And it's all in your inbox. But yeah, I watched, yeah, Dick Mayer had some good recommendations. So thank you and I hope we get out soon. Any questions?
Members, questions for the testifier?
Okay, I did think so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Armstrong.
Clarapana, to be followed by Pamela Tumpap.
Excuse me. I would like to kind of say the same thing that so many other people said about the budget chair from last year and the year before. Kiani did such a great job. It was, I just remember when the sand mining moratorium was going through. And when budget came, everything stopped. And so it drew out the time so long that by the time the motion was finally passed, the moratorium was finally passed, we were at the end of the year. And then to get any legislation done, by the time anything got started, it was budget time again. And then budget went over again, as it did the year before. And then there wasn't enough time to adequately address the laws that needed to be made for protection. And I remember Yuki Lei saying, well, I don't see how this gives protection. And we were never able to really address it in the time of the moratorium because a budget session took so long. So I would just, unless you have a plan already for the next person with budget because it's so important and takes so much time. Unless there is an actual plan made by someone who knows that it's going to work better, I just hope that you stay with Kiani because it's really a long time to wait while budget goes on to finish up work. And so. And I haven't analyzed it like Dick did. I thought he did such a good job. But I think that you guys can probably analyze what your interests are and what you would shine at doing. And I'd like to go on to. And, um, I'd like to go on to the, uh, to the rules. And I just have, I have a concern, I think it's ten A, where, uh, what I see is that you have a county communication now, and it gets listed, and then it gets talked about in a meeting of the whole, and then assigned. And with this, with this new one, it could be, um, assigned to a committee without having, um, gone through that whole process. And I just wonder, you know, I think some of the things would be good because you, you'd save time, but some of them you would not. So how would you know what's being assigned without the knowledge of everybody else? And would you ever get to object to somebody? You know, I would see that you would say, well, if we, we see these things should be shortcutted, we can just assign them, that they would all go out to all the council members, and if you had an objection, it should go back to the regular, longer process. I, I am just really afraid that, um, there would be less communication in this way. And I just have a question. In making your rules, is there anywhere where the county council can override a ministerial override of law? Sometimes, um, the department heads can give permits um, that are, that do not necessarily comply with the community plans or necessarily all of the procedures that needed to be done. But from my own self and trying to get the sand mining permit repealed, it was impossible to do. It was impossible for me, no matter how many letters we wrote, it was impossible to get that bad permit out. Is there any way that the county council could have a chance to have a public hearing and override a ministerial override of, um, the usual procedures and laws? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clarapana. Members, questions? The testifier? Dingnan, thank you so very much, Ms. Clarapana.
Pamela Tumpop to be followed by Liko Wallace. Ms. Tumpop, it's your time to testify. You can unmute, please. Moving on to Liko Wallace. Ms. Wallace, if you're online, you can unmute. The next testifier is Robin Knox to be followed by Jen Mather.
Aloha, mai kako. Um, Honorable Chair Kama and council members. Uh, my name is Jen Mather, and although I am a current resident of Kahului, my heart is always in La Haina. Um, so I'm testifying on Agenda Items twenty-three-two and twenty-three-four, and I usually come a lot better prepared, but I just jotted some stuff down, so apologies if I just read straight off of my phone. Um, I'm just gonna pretty much, like, testify to the council member name and the respective committees that I believe you all should chair. I believe, um, these individuals have proven their capabilities in previous chairmanships, um, or their life experience kind of speaks to the reasons why they should lead these committees. Um, so Councilmember Rollins Fernandez, I think, um, Budget, Finance Chair and Vice Chair. So everything you've been doing most excellently over the last four years. Um, Councilmember Johnson, I think, oh, so speaking to what Lucien was saying, like, kind of moving things around, and Dick Mayer was saying, moving things around as well. Um, I think Councilmember Johnson should have Human Concerns, Housing and Agriculture, and take the land use, um, out of the housing. Um, and Councilmember Paulton, ooh, this is a long one, sorry. Uh, Disaster Resilience, International Affairs and Planning and Land Use. Driploo. Um, Councilmember Sinancy, uh, I've given you two, and I'm so sorry, it's a lot of work for you. Um, because, you know, you guys are gonna totally vote on all the committees that I'm giving you right now. Um, Oe, Resources and Parks, and then also the Water and Infrastructure Committee as well. Um, and then Councilmember Sugimura, um, with you being President of MPO, correct? Is that right? Your Transportation and Environment, I think you've been doing an excellent job in that. Um, and then with all that said, because all joking aside, you're probably not gonna take me up on these, uh, committees and the restructuring, I just strongly urge you to, um, to, to thoughtfully deliberate on who you think will be the best suited to chair these committees, regardless of what they are, just based on the subject matter that, that you choose to put in them and the experience, rather just, like, rather than just the names of the committees. Because as you all know, everything that's implemented or talked about or discussed in each of these things go beyond the scope of just those few acronyms, right? So, okay, that's it. Ma'ala.
Members, questions for the testifier? Dingnan, thank you so very much, Ms. Mather.
The next testifier is Liko Wallace to be followed by Jean Lindo.
Good evening, council members, and congratulations to all of you. It's really late. Been up really early. Um, I just wanted to testify on Resolution twenty-three-two, and I wanted to encourage the council to keep Keanee as Budget Chair. She did a wonderful job this past two years, uh, studied really hard. I've a little lost the words right now, I'm so distracted. Um, anyway, that is my support, if you would keep her as Budget Chair, um, for this coming term. Thank you.
Members, any questions for our testifier? Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you.
The next testifier is Connie Lee Williams to be followed by Faith Chase.
Aloha, mai kako. Uh, my name is Connie Lee Williams. Um, I'm testifying as a kuliana landowner in Haiku, um, in East Kuyaha, specifically, um, as a Kalo farmer, um, as somebody who's continuing to fight for my water rights, um, and the return of water into my stream. Um, speaking in general terms, I'm just gonna read off my, my notes. Um, speaking in general terms, uh, the Chair and Vice Chair positions for each committee, um, in my mind, are not just titles, but, um, this council really needs to deliberate on who sits in those, those positions and who's qualified for those positions, um, and who's best suited for them. Uh, as far as the Budget and Finance, um, Keanee should remain in that seat, um, that's all there is to that. Uh, I'm gonna speak mostly on the Water and Infrastructure, um, Committee, because to be honest, it does sound like a water-divergent committee, um, just when those two words come together. Um, I wanna make it clear that water is not just a natural resource, but it's a cultural resource. Um, the HRS one seventy-four C dash one oh one, um, Native Hawaiian Water Rights, which is part of the state water code, um, clearly outlines a specific right and use of water for taro lands and kuliana lands for our cultural and religious practices. So anything concerning water should be under the purview of the Oe, Resources Committee, in my opinion, um, just because of the state law. Including any upcoming water leases for, um, Alexander and Baldwin, um, regarding East Maui Water. I wanna make this entire council aware that, um, in my work over the past year, um, I did attend countless meetings with the APT Committee last year, that's no longer officially that title here, um, and constantly documented my river, um, in regards to Mahipono East Marriation, Alexander and Baldwin. Um, since that time, um, a forty-five-page complaint was sent to Seaworm in October. So to the State of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources at the state level, um, exposing conflicts of interest, um, in emails, um, photographs of water documentation throughout the year, um, and workers for EMI violating my, uh, my water rights, like, on the spot. So EMI, of course, is owned by Mahipono and Alexander and Baldwin. Um, part of the resolutions that were given to Seaworm included a site visit from them, an official investigation, um, on those corporations by the department, uh, Seaworm's corporations, uh, communications to those corporations, and me being CC'd, um, in those communications. And I have a copy of that letter that I'll be forwarding to this council, um, so that you folks know I'm not just bluffing, because I don't bluff. And also that EMI's water permits and leases not only being revoked because they've mismanaged the water and broke the water laws, um, but that they are also sanctioned against getting any water leases and permits in the future. Those first three have already been completed or are in the process. And currently, um, Mahipono, EMI, Alexander Baldwin are under investigation by DLNR. Uh, so that's something that this council needs to be aware of as far as this committee. They're under investigation, so any decisions made by the committee, um, could get pulled into that investigation if there's any conflicts of interest with that. Ma'ala. Uh, da-da-da. Fourth thing, um, this council should be reminded of the Charter Amendment twelve, um, that just passed this past, this election, um, removing the management of water from private corporations and putting it back into community decision-making, um, which favors stream registration, so not just council decision-making, but community decision-making. And so that's, as far as all I wanna talk about with that. Um, and this is just a side note, um, unrelated to this, but I think it needs to be, I need to say this in this meeting right now. Um, I do wanna congratulate Chair Kama, um, but I also want to reinforce accountability, um, moving forward. Uh, this was the first time I voted in this, in Maui County, um, among, and so myself among with many of my colleagues, we contributed, um, not financially, but through our time, um, and our support to a platform that did put you into that seat over there, that got you into that seat. Um, my vote matters, my contribution in that way matters, many of our contributions like that matter. Were not for that, you wouldn't be over there in the chair seat, correct? And literally were just, was just inaugurated this morning, I was in attendance, sitting over there. And then you had the privilege to sit in that seat over there. To suggest a recess, um, in order to attend what really is just a party, to avoid business that needs to be done and taken care of today, um, no matter how long it takes, that needs to get done, because that's a job, um, that many of us might wanna do ourselves. That's, it's unacceptable to me. Especially on the first day in office. And so I, I want to remind this entire council, um, and everybody who has official positions in here, to ma'ala ma'ur kuliana first, and then you get to go play. Because I waited today to give this testimony. So that's all I have to say. Ma'ala, Noe. Any questions?
Members, any question for the testifier? Dingnan, thank you so very much, Ms. Williams.
Ma'ala.
Ahu iho. Aloha.
The next testifier is Faith Chase to be followed by Kisa Lu.
Aloha again, Chair Tasha Kama, aloha, council members. This is, uh, interesting, um, because I see that things might change as we move forward. But, um, I, first of all, I, I really admire, of course, um, and respect all recommendations by the previous testifier, Dick Mayer. So while I, he was speaking it quickly, and I couldn't write all down the notes, it sounds like you have emails of suggestions from him, and so, um, I, I, I do, would like, I would like you to consider those suggestions that he's made. But from my own review of these committees to date right now, um, I definitely would like to keep, uh, I would definitely like to support, um, Keanee, uh, Councilmember Keanee Rollins Fernandez to chair the Budget, Finance and Economic Development, um, Committee. Um, I strongly support, um, Councilmember Tamara Paulton, of course, in the Disaster, Resilience, International Affairs and Planning Committee, but I would actually like to see, perhaps maybe the governmental relations move into her committee, because international affairs work so, uh, in tandem with those governmental relations. So Ethics and Transparency is a doozy of enough committee of work to be done by whoever might hold that, um, committee office. I know we have two, two new council members that might fit the bill for these two committees. The second one is Human Concerns, Oe, Resources and Parks Committee. While that was under the purview of Councilmember Tasha Kama, and not knowing how we're moving forward, I would say I can't make any recommendations for that, but I definitely would like to take the governmental relations and put it into the committee that I am suggesting Councilmember Tasha, um, Tamara Paulton, excuse me, um, to chair, because, um, she has been the, one of the most adamant speakers in that realm of, um, hmm, country of Hawaii, uh, right, uh, uh, Aboriginal Hawaiian rights, and I think they work well together. Land Use and Housing Committee, Gabe Johnson, um, of course, I think there's too much work to be done, there's too much of a body of work to let go now. Transportation, Environmental and Ag Committee, um, obviously, uh, Councilmember Yuki Sugimura put in some work in there. I would have to say that the transportation part of it, um, it's, it's, it's a little, it's, it's kind of a, I'd like to see transportation actually somehow bridge with the Parks Committee, that, that section, because, um, we have, as you all know, and our, your, our new, our two new council members, you need to know that I advocate for the houseless, the homeless, those struggling with safe sleeping spaces. So the Parks Committee and the Transportation Committee actually are, really work hand-in-hand. So maybe there's a little bit of lomi-lomi massaging that could be done there. No offense to the work that, um, Transportation, um, the work of Councilmember Yuki Sugimura to date in that transportation area, but I don't feel like enough has been done, so either work together strongly or move that around. The Water and Infrastructure Committee, like I spoke earlier, I strongly support, uh, Councilmember Shane Sinancy keeping that committee. And I look forward to following how, um, these may morph over time, and I look forward to the Hawaii Supreme Court, um, settling the business at, to date, and thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Members, any questions for the testifier? Dingnan, thank you so very much, Ms. Chase.
Next testifier is Kisa Lu to be followed by Junya Nakoah.
Oh, my, it's taking me a second, and I had to switch over here and make my way home. Four or five hours to wait to be able to testify, this seemed a little, um, difficult. Aloha, my name is Kisa Lu, I'm here to testify in Resolution twenty-three dash four, and here on my own time, on my own behalf. Um, I'm gonna just go through things really quickly, because I think my biggest concern is that last one, uh, number seven. Uh, when it comes to the drip and the Great Committee, I honestly kind of feel like maybe we could switch those chairs a little bit. The Great Committee is kind of a big deal, it's a big job. And I know we have a new council member, I'm not entirely sure if, uh, that council member is ready to take on such a big task, but, you know, it is what it is. I honestly think that she'd, she'd actually do pretty great in drip, I think maybe even better there. Um, I feel like there's a lot that could be done in that space, but, um, I'm just gonna leave that where it is. My biggest concern is actually, um, with the Water and Infrastructure Committee, the VI Committee. Tom Cook and Yuki Lei Sugimura, council members, I'm not sure if that is... Hmm, okay, sorry. I'm trying really hard to be nice, is what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to be like, oh my God, this is, I'm, you know, like, be courteous or whatever, but I can't anymore. We really think that we need to put our, our water in the hands of development still yet. Do we still need to be doing that? I'm confused, honestly, I'm so confused, because I know the AMB lease is coming up, right? And so now we have to make a decision between if we're gonna put it in the hands of a foreign government or if we're gonna put it in the hands of a foreign business, and I don't understand why we're even doing that in the first place, when it should be in the hands of the Kanaka Oe, it should be in the hands of the people who actually know how to steward of the water here and actually care to steward the water and not use it as some type of commodity that can be, um, that can be monetized in that way. So my biggest concern is that, I really think, you know, if you're gonna have those two council members there, that you at least... members there, that you at least pull the lease. And I think giving a little bit more time just to really vet if we're, you know, we have the right council members in the right spots, like, I don't know. I really think that there could be a little bit more time dedicated to figuring out if that's the best space for everybody, if that's even what they want. I, I'm not even sure at this point with our new council members, if that's something they're super interested in, I can't really tell. And I just, hmm, oof, okay, well, my time's almost up, but, um, hmm, good luck, I guess, is what I was gonna say. Also, like, again, I have to admit, like, the whole, how we did this whole, this whole situation of testimony, you guys, come on. Like, I feel almost at this point that it's just to discourage people from coming in and speaking. That's how I feel. It took so long just to be able to talk, and I have to sit and wait for each one. I have the privilege to be able to do that, but there are so many important voices that don't have that privilege. This needs to be corrected. This is really, really awful. And it's, you're supposed to be encouraging the public to come and be a part of this, and yet you continue to do things like this to stifle our voices. It's not okay. And I'm speaking not really for myself as much as I'm speaking for everyone who couldn't show up because of these ridiculous ways you're doing things over here. And I'm so sorry, like, again, I want to be nice and I want to be kind, I want to say nice things and like smile at you guys, but I can't right now because it's so frustrating. Mahalo for your time and consideration.
Members, any questions for our testifier? Mr. Cook, do you have a clarifying question? Yes.
I wanna, I wanna commend you for, can you hear this? I'd like to commend you. Your patience and your passion today is noted, okay? Today was a very frustrating day and you stuck in there and you yielded and you passed. You don't know me, over time, everybody will get to know me. For years, I've come and given testimony. What you're saying, I feel that it's been frustrating in the past, I don't know what the ideal solution is, but I just want to say I respect you and I appreciate you and you haven't wasted your time today. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any other questions or clarifying questions for our testifier? Thank you so very much, Ms. Liu.
The last person signed up to testify is Junya Nakoah. Nakoah, it's your time to testify, please unmute yourself. Chair, there's no one else signed up to testify under the, other than Mr. Nakoah. If there's anyone who would like to testify on any of the matters before the council today, please unmute yourself or let yourself be known. Chair, I see no one indicating that they wish to testify at this time.
Thank you. So members, are there any objections to receiving written testimony?
No objections.
No objections.
No objections, Chair.
Thank you.
Closing public testimony.
So, Ms. Clark.
Chair.
Yes.
Are we also closing public testimony?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, that's what I meant to say. Accepting written and closing public testimony. Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Chair, there is no further business before the council.
The agenda's done for the day.
Okay, meeting adjourned?
Yes. So without any further business?
Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, will you please explain yourself a little better as far as there not being any business? So are you saying that we have satisfied the requirements under Sunshine Law to accept all testimony that of those individuals who have signed up? And that we don't intend to take action on any of the resolutions now?
Correct, because it's going to be deferred.
Okay, that wasn't, I guess that wasn't clear. Yeah, because I, I object to that.
Chair?
Yes.
Recession, please.
Oh, okay. Recession till seven twenty-two. Okay, recess.
Recording has stopped.
Yana Kekaku?
On the line? Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, call them. I think, can we have a call?
Go on the line and we'll do the countdown. Five, four, three,
Recording has started.
The Maui County Council Organization Meeting of January 2nd, 2023 will now reconvene. And I'd like to call on Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo Chair. Okay, so I would like consideration on Resolution 23-5, which is adopting the rules of the council.
Yes.
Chair, would you like me to explain the intention first or make the motion first?
Maybe, can you do things backwards right now? Go ahead and explain.
Sure, we have no rules right now.
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. The intention, members, is to take up this item and substitute the council rules that we had used all the way up until noon today. So the 2022 council rules, I'm not sure if the resolution is 22-dash number or if it's 21-dash number. Mr. Ratz is looking that up for me. And so in considering that, I suggest, and if everyone's open to it, that we, I think the resolution is 21-178. And so the motion would be to substitute that resolution, 21-178, which again is the rules that we had used up until noon today, former council. And we would adopt it by unanimous consent without making any amendments. And in that way, we just, we have rules in place. So that would be the purpose. And then at a future council meeting, we can further amend. And we can even do it through substitution. But this way, we'll have rules in place. And we won't, you know, the meeting won't last for another hour or two in deliberating different amendments that council members may make on the resolution, on the council rules that's posted on today's agenda.
Yes.
Ms. Sukimara.
Mahalo, Members Sukimara, I was going to make the motion, but Chair, if you would like us to discuss before the motion, I'm also.
Just do the motion.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 23-5.
There's a second. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Digging.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mahalo Chair. I move to substitute Resolution 23-5 for Resolution 21-178.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Mahalo Chair. So that was the discussion, and I will yield to questions that I think Members Sukimara had.
Yes, Ms. Sukimara.
Thank you. I think that this body, there was a motion which failed to override your previous discussion. We went through the portion of your agenda, which then we agreed, well, because the motion to override failed, we did those items, K, L, M, N, O, on the agenda.
Correct.
And now we're trying to go into a part that is, was not what you wanted. So I object to this because this council is trying to push something that you didn't want and that I don't think that is fair to talk about rules that were from last term, that the two new council members have no idea what we're talking about. It is not transparent. It is not what we should be doing. And I believe that we will take this up at the next meeting when you must be thinking that we're going to do that. So we're trying to slide something in here that I think is wrong. Your override did not pass. Therefore, I support your initial decision. And it's wrong that we start trying to do this. And the next thing we're trying to do is pass all the committees or whatever. No, let us keep to what you want as a chair. And, and that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. If I can add to this discussion, I respect Councilmember Sukimara. I disagree with this point because all these folks waited all day because this was posted on the agenda. And for us to say, oh, we're going to cherry pick the ones today, then what did we leave them here? You know, we left them here with unfinished business. There is a very timely, timely topics in all of these committees. I'll give you a specific example. The Lanai Ag Park has 180 days and the times are ticking. So why, why, why delay further? Now, that's, that's just an example, but specifically for the rules of the council, a simple change, substitution, is I support this idea because if we're going to take, if we're going to take this up, it's going to take hours. So a substitution, toriaizu, for the time being, as they say, is kind of a good middle ground, right? It's not what everybody wants, but it's definitely something that we can all come together and say, it's a compromise. So why can't we compromise on the very first day when we're all sitting here with all the folks who gave us all those votes? Lead by some compromise. Let's do it. I think it's getting late, and I think it's time for us to stand up and start doing the work and get it done today.
Thank you.
Chair, may I?
Yes.
I gave some legal advice to the Chair over the break that I wanted to share with all of you. I think it's important for you to have rules to operate under. We've been just presuming that you're operating under Roberts' rules, for example, but you need to adopt Roberts' rules through your rules. So what this does is just, you know, keeps the old rules for the time being. And then, you know, it can be changed at a future meeting. But there should be something that says, for example, that you're operating under Roberts' rules of order. That's just our recommendation. So what he said, I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Senansi?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. That was my understanding, Chair, that we're just adopting our current rules until we can address the changes before, before we adjourn, Chair, because if not, we wouldn't have any rules in place. We've been operating with these rules for the last two years. And so it's just a continuation for another month or so when we come back. And then we can, then you can come back with all your amendments for this one. So in support, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Palton?
Thank you, Chair. I support either way, but I just would ask that once we start to discuss, I think, 23-4, that we suspend the time, time keep because we got to do a deep dive discussion on that. So that would be my request. Other than that, I don't really care. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Yukiri Sukimara, you answer that?
Yeah, so my question is then, what would happen if we don't do this? Because it wasn't part of the initial discussions. And we are changing it. I don't know if it's Court Council or OCS. I mean, if we adjourn right now, we take care of the business that we said we were going to take care of. We've made some changes with the clerk, the deputy clerk, to accommodate, you know, whatever the council members wanted. And so therefore, without the rules for the council, what would happen?
I'll just speak to Roberts' rules. So you don't technically operate under it unless your rules say so. So it's important to adopt that. There may be other rules. For example, there are certain items that require two-thirds votes under your rules. But that's not the case until the rules are adopted. So, you know, there may be things that come up and perhaps, you know, OCS has further examples. But without those rules, then, you know, you're operating just sort of, you know, without any rules. And it's important to have an understanding of how this body operates.
So the intent during the break was to be able to adopt this by unanimous consent. Doesn't sound like we're going to get unanimous consent. So in that situation, what's the next recommendation?
Chair, there's a motion on the floor, so you would take a vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, Ms. Hodgens?
Can we both be provided with these rules that we're supposed to vote on a little bit? Can you, somebody put it in a chat link or something?
It's long.
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez.
They are on our county website, our council website, and it's in the chat now. I would be happy to, I would support taking a recess, Chair, to enable Member Cook and Member Uu Hodgens to review it. And I'd like to echo the sentiments of Mr. Whitaker that we have been operating without any Roberts' rules as well. And so I wanted to ask for clarification on the earlier ruling when there was a motion to appeal the decision of the Chair. And Mr. Whitaker said that it was, we would require five votes. What is that, what rule is that based on?
It's based on Roberts' rules of order.
Okay, which we are not operating under now.
I think the presumption was, you know, that we were operating under it. But technically, the rules of the council.
We currently have no rules. Therefore, that we are not required to have five votes to overrule the decision of the Chair. But Chair, I'm not going to do that to you.
Thank you so much. I so appreciate that.
But I would like us to have rules.
Disappearing.
Because it's important for us to have rules established. And the last thing, the last thing I would like to say is that this is not an underhanded, sneaky attempt. This, these rules were adopted unanimously. There isn't anything sneaky about it. We've been. Oh, that was because of the clerk thing. The point is, Members Sukimara is insinuating that there was some kind of like sneaky malicious intent. But we've been operating using these rules. They were fair. It's, there is, I'm not trying to do anything underhanded in this moment. And if I wanted to, I could. And I could say, there's no rules in place. And we decide we're going to overrule your decision and take up all the resolutions today because there is no rules that say we can't. So I would like us to have rules, Chair. Mahalo.
Member Johnson?
Chair, could I request a five-minute break? It seems that the internet's going out and I, we, is there even people frozen? I don't know. But a little recess if possible.
Five minutes? Seven forty-six. No, now it's seven forty-seven. Recess till seven forty-seven. Are you guys reading it?
Recording has stopped.
Yeah, to digest it. Yeah. I think I did, yeah. Oof, yes, I am. Yes.
Okay, I have Akaku on the line and we'll do the countdown. Five, four, three, two,
Recording has started.
The Maui County Organizational Meeting of January 2nd, 2023 will now come to order. Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo Chair. I would like to restate what my motion will be. And if the secondary supports that, then that will be the new motion on the floor. And the motion is to add a sunset date to the substituted Resolution 21-178. So it would date that it is enacted upon adoption and that it would stop being in effect on the first council meeting in February 2023.
Chair, as a secondary, I approve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Chair, just one clarification. The, through the end of the first council meeting?
Mahalo, Ms. Thompson, yes. To the end of the first council meeting in February 2023. And if Member Cook and Member Uu Hodgens. And if Member Cook and Member Uu Hodgens are supportive, then, yeah, I think that, hopefully that addresses their concerns. Mahalo Chair.
Thank you. Discussion?
Am I correct that this also enables us to move forward tonight? Right? So that's a substantive, and we'll be able to address it being better informed at the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, members, are you ready for the vote?
Ready.
Ms. Clerk?
Member Shane Senancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nohelani Uu Hodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Keanee Rollins Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Palton?
No.
Councilmember Yukile Suki Mora?
No.
Chair Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Chair, you have six ayes, two noes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Clerk? Is there other business before the body?
Mahalo Chair. So that was the motion to amend the main motion. And now we would call for the question on the main motion as amended. Mahalo Chair.
Correct, thank you. Okay, Clerk?
Councilmember Shane Senancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nohelani Uu Hodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Keanee Rollins Fernandez?
Aye.
Gabe Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamara Palton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yukile Suki Mora?
No.
Chair Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Chair, you have seven ayes, one no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Clerk?
Chair, there is no further business before the council.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Rollins Fernandez?
I'm sorry, Ms. Lutti.
It's okay, I like to say it.
Like repeating yourself.
Chair, mahalo for enabling us to vote on rules, the rules resolution tonight. And for the other resolutions that we have not taken action on, will you please share with us when we will be ready to take action when the next meeting will be?
I have scheduled the next council meeting for Friday, January 20th, 2023. Nine o'clock, here in the chambers. Hopefully, you'll all come here to the chambers. Hopefully, you'll feel the nice vibe here and you'll wanna come here. So, or you can do it on Blue Jeans, but hopefully you all wanna come and rub each other's shoulders. But that is the next council day, 9:00 AM in the morning. Clerk?
Mahalo Chair.
Thank you.
Third time, Chair, there is no further business before the council.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you all for being here. The meeting of the Maui County Council Organizational Meeting of January 2nd, 2023 is now adjourned at 7:55. At 7:55, adjourned at 7:55 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Recording has stopped.